It is, yeah. So hopefully next year. But.
Mayor, we are ready.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. Welcome to the March 21th City Council meeting. This is going to be a continuation of our work plan presentations. I will start with a roll call. Councilmember Vera.
Present.
Councilmember Puzza.
Present.
Councilmember Erickson.
Present.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Present.
And Mayor McMorrin.
Here. May I raise the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it's one nation, God, justice for all.
All right, are there any community announcements from colleagues or staff?
Nothing.
None? Okay. Are there any public comments for the items not on the agenda?
We have no public comment as of yet.
Do we have any correspondence? I don't think so. Did we get any correspondence?
We had no correspondence for the day.
Okay. So it looks like we will resume with the work plan for finance. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor McMorrin, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Lisa Soger, Chief Financial Officer, back again. I'm here with Elizabeth Shavelson, our Financial Systems and Purchasing Manager, to present the Finance Department work plan. I'm pleased to be celebrating two years with Culver City, and I definitely need to thank Mary Nohler, our Assistant CFO, for her continued partnership as we've navigated the past two years and continue to strengthen the Finance Department. I'd also like to thank my other two division managers, Michael Towler, the Finance Manager, and Iris Kim, our Accounting Manager, for all the work they do. And I have to say, in my first year, I filled 12 vacant positions in the department. So we are definitely getting ourselves above water. I do have two more vacancies to fill. I'm very hopeful. One, I interviewed for on Tuesday, so we're really close to being at a full complement of staff, and that's enabling us to do more than just, you know, meeting our requirements and all the day-to-day tasks. Next slide, please. Culver City has historically received awards for budget excellence from the Government Finance Officers Association and the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. We achieved these awards again for the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. We also received the GFOA Award for the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and the city's first-ever popular annual financial report. We are determined to provide financial documents that continue to meet these qualifications so that we continue to receive the awards. The Finance Department serves not only the residents and businesses in our community, but we serve all the departments and city staff. We strive to help them achieve their work plan goals and provide individual service to employees. In addition to major work plan initiatives, the Finance Department manages multiple processes, day in and day out, including payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, revenue collection and purchasing. An internal audit has moved back to the Finance Department from the City Managers Department this year. Staff also complies with a myriad of state and federal reporting requirements. We take our job as stewards of the public funds very seriously. Next slide, please. Finance staff processes tens of thousands of transactions annually. All revenue received and payments made by the city must be tracked and reconciled. Timesheets for staff are reviewed and paychecks issued. Finance staff supports departments in grant reporting and RFP issuance. In fact, we assist departments with procurement on all levels, from, you know, the paper they need for copy machines to very complicated bids. The staff strives to provide excellent customer service to Culver City residents, businesses and staff, day in and day out. And now I'm going to, next slide, and I'm going to hand the presentation over to Elizabeth to go through the department's work plan priorities.
Good afternoon, Mayor McMorrin and Council. I'm here to present the proposed work plan priorities for the Finance Department. The first one you see here is in regards to the city's user fee study. The department is currently conducting a user-wide fee study. The last comprehensive update of the city's master fee schedule was completed in fiscal year 1314. The city's consultants and finance staff are working with departments to review all of the city's existing fees for services. Once the draft master fee schedule is complete, staff will bring the document to council for review. The goal is to hold the public hearing for the adoption of the fee schedule in July, and after adoption, staff will work with departments to implement the new fees. In the future, staff plans to bring the list of fees back to council annually as part of the budget process. Next slide, please. Culver City voters have approved several new tax initiatives over the past 12 years. Staff continues to implement and monitor all those revenue streams. This year, staff worked with the business community to implement Measure BL. In the next fiscal year, staff will be focusing on compliance with the city's tax measures to ensure that the city is receiving the appropriate revenues. The city has existing consultant contracts in place to provide assistance with tax administration, compliance and auditing efforts. Staff is working on a comprehensive update to the city's financial forecast to analyze budget and economic impacts over time. This forecast will be used and updated in fiscal year 2425. Next slide, please. In the upcoming year, the department will continue to strive to improve transparency and reporting. Many of these new initiatives began this year. This includes public-friendly documents like the PAFR, the Popular Annual Financial Report, which is a companion to the city's comprehensive annual report. The city published its first-ever PAFR last year and will publish a new one this year. Staff is also currently developing a budget-in-brief document as a companion to the extensive budget document that the council adopts. In other related efforts, staff has made updates to the Finance Department webpages on the city's website and is currently working to launch an online portal to present and track all of the city's capital improvement projects and the capital improvement program. More updates are planned in the coming year, and funding will be needed for the ongoing contract services to assist with these new public outreach initiatives. Next slide, please. As City Attorney Heather Baker mentioned yesterday, the Finance Department will be working with the city's attorney's office and other departments to update the city's contracting and purchasing ordinance and associated policies. The existing ordinance and policies were approved at different times, and a comprehensive update will clarify the procurement process for all departments and seek to streamline processes where feasible and increase competition and transparency. Due to the ongoing operational demands and staff constraints, using an outside consultant to create the initial draft for review will be beneficial. Next slide, please. Finance will be working in cooperation with the Public Works EPO Division to make sure that the city is following all the requirements set out by CalRecycle under SB 1383, and as well as the city's environmental purchasing policy. The policy requires tracking and reporting on procurement of certain recycled products and mulch. Additionally, there are elements that need to be incorporated into the city's RFP and bid documents. Again, due to staff time constraints, an outside consultant to help with this initial implementation would be very beneficial. Next slide, please. The city purchased its current timekeeping system over 10 years ago, and it has become more and more difficult for departments and payroll staff to use the existing payroll system for timekeeping and payroll processing. Finance and IT are currently working on an RFP for a new timekeeping system. There will be a cost associated with the software and the integration with the city's finance system. Additionally, it will require finance staff time to train all staff on the new system. However, once implemented, we expect to see much greater efficiencies in every pay period for both the department timekeepers as well as payroll staff. Next slide, please. Public Works EPO is evaluating a new refuse tracking and billing system, and Finance currently sends out the monthly refuse bills and collects the payments. Finance and EPO are working together to find a new system that will better serve customers, that fully integrates the operational services with work orders and billing, and offers improved online access for customers. It is anticipated that the implementation of a new system would occur in the next fiscal year. And that concludes the department's.
I want to close by thanking all of the finance staff for their hard work and willingness to embrace change, to improve our finance processes. And I want to thank the other departments for working with us to find efficiencies and budget savings wherever possible, and that is an ongoing challenge we've posed to them. And that completes our formal presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
We have no public comments right now.
I'm going to switch up the order today. I'm going to try to do that a little bit more. Can we start off with Councilmember Vera?
Thank you so very much. I know this is probably the least attractive of all departments, but it's most, definitely the most important. Really appreciate all your work. Just a quick question in terms of, on the track that we are right now in spending and what's, sort of the ins and outs of the daily operation. Is what we're doing right now sustainable for the long haul?
I think one of our slides, and we showed it yesterday in the intro, and we'll definitely have it again as we present the budget. Right now, operational funding in the general fund, we are projected to be overspending the revenue that is coming in. And we're using our reserves to pay for those things. And many of the things are one-time, well, are one-time costs. Certainly, there are CIPs that we're doing. But that delta is unsustainable in the long term because the reserves will only last so long, right? And if we're spending them, we're not adding to those reserves at all. So I think there will be, there are a lot of things that the residents want, that staff is asking for. I think there will be tough choices to make as we move through the budget process this year and look to the future.
Thank you. And in terms of performance-wise, RE isn't, how is that? I think you touched on it, but what is that looking like right now?
So it's, you know, we lowered the expectations last year at mid-year because we knew the revenue was coming in far less, and we didn't quite meet those, that revenue projection. And this year, we took it way down to about $8 million. I think we were at 11 last year. It was started at 14, then we said 11. So this year's projection is eight. We'll see how it performs. Like, we may just squeak by and meet it, but the performance has been, there's just not a lot of properties selling. And that continues to sort of hold true this whole fiscal year so far. We had a couple, there was some small commercial sales that bolstered our numbers, like in the fall, but it seems pretty low this year.
So we need to plant a couple of money trees in order to sustain what we're doing right now. All right.
Exactly. Along with the Public Works tree planting program.
Yeah, right, right.
They can plant some of those.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm sure we're going to have some difficult conversations coming ahead, but thank you and your staff for all your hard work. And I'm glad to see that. I think we're only one opening now. You've hired, what, 11, 12 positions?
I've hired 12, and then, of course, you know, there is attrition. People get offered other jobs, so I did lose two. I think one of those, we're going to be making an offer this week or next week, and then I have one more that is currently vacant.
All right. Well, thank you so much and all of your staff for all you do. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. And thank you for your report and the performance of your department, both you and your staff. It's a very important function in a city, what you are doing. I have two questions regarding the second priority. Well, not the second, but the second item, review of revenue streams and financial forecasts. I'm wondering if that also might include to look at some of our costs. And when I did, I went back five years in my notes and pulled out a few things. You know, one thing was, five years ago, we did an actuary study for our unfunded pension obligation and created sort of this assumed payment schedule. You know, one is the CalPERS, and then the other one was 21, 20 years accelerated, which we don't really have money to do. But anyway, I'm just wondering if part of what you're doing there, you're also going to look at if there is some changes that needs to be done with regards to our future pension payments of the unfunded obligation?
Certainly. And I think I did talk a lot about pensions when I did our community budget workshop. We will go over them again when I present the budget in May. We do have actuarial consultants on, they are, you know, under contract with us, and they will be doing, every couple of years, they do a report. So we will be including that. I think one of the things that is, our unfunded accrued liability changes every year. CalPERS, so last year, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but last year, it was high. I think I want to say it was $220 million. And that was lower than the year before because CalPERS, the two years prior, had had very strong returns coming out of the pandemic. The next year, their returns plummeted, and it takes a couple of years for them to show. And we then, in what the current unfunded liability, which informs our payment for 2425, has gone up about $100 million. And it will, and the thing about CalPERS is it balances over time, right? As CalPERS, as the returns, as the rate of return changes, that unfunded accrued liability is really a moving target. And so as long as we can be prepared to pay what we owe in a year, we're okay. The good news is we also funded our Section 115 Pension Trust significantly with that Measure RE one-time windfall. So it is something we track very closely, and we will certainly be watching in the forecast.
And Councilmember, I hadn't talked with Lisa about this yet, but I think it's time for us to do another actuarial. I think we should.
Certainly.
Like ASAP is what I'm, I was going to talk to her about that this morning. Seriously.
Okay.
So my next question relates to the same thing also, but this is more, you know, capital expenditures. And that is also in 2019, you know, we did a study. So we have a report, and I think that it would be interesting for my colleagues to actually see this report. I was going to find the first page so I can read what it is. So, yeah, so the report was called Facility Condition Assessment Service. And so it was looking at all our facilities that the city owned, all of them, and then evaluated where they were with regards to maintenance and repair and so on. And it sort of created a short, which, you know, looks, well, you can't see much. But anyway, and they classified our different buildings and, you know, it came out with a number. It sort of doesn't say anything, but it was, at that time, was 8%, which is sort of, doesn't, it's fair. That gives us a fair rating on where we kept the quality of our buildings. And the immediate capital need to catch up to be good, at that time, was $20 million. If we don't do anything over the 10-year that this report is, and we are five years into it, and that's really why I went back to 19 to sort of find different things that I think that we might want to do sort of midterm correction or look at things. But if we don't do anything, so 10 years out, the cost needed or capital needed would be more or less $38 million, and most of our buildings would be in fair or poor condition. So I just want to ask if that would be something that you also would look at in this revenue streams and financial forecast for the capital improvement? Because I don't think we've done much of this. A few we have, you know, and a few we have on our schedule. But I think it would be good to at least do some internal update or figuring out where we are. So it's a part of our whole discussion, what the capital needs for our cities.
I wholeheartedly agree. I think it's something I've touched on. We've had conversations with Dimitri and the Public Works staff because they are the ones who would really be updating that report. And then we could work in conjunction together to figure out a plan. What we're really also hoping is this new CIP program, budgeting program that we're using, will also be able to capture some of those things. One of the features that I really like about it is that it includes a place where you sort of need to put in ongoing maintenance costs. So you begin to see the long-term costs of a CIP. We're not just having to fund that initial, you know, development of it, but what's it going to cost us to maintain over the long term so that we can really plan for the future?
Well, I'd like to add a little bit. Something that cities in general do a poor job of is factoring in the replacement cost of facilities. And an example would be our parking garages in the downtown. They have a useful life. They will not last forever. I think that, you know, I don't know what the useful life of a parking garage is. I'd say it's 50 years. I think we're 30-something, I don't, you know, and we don't have any money set aside to replace those parking garages. That's one example.
Oh, yeah. And I know I've been bringing up a number of times that we need to raise our parking fees because we need to start setting money aside to have something to work from when we really need to replace or do major overhaul. And on that topic, our parking fees are very low comparing to everyone around us and so on. So I don't think it would be terrible to raise them a little. Of course, it has to be discussed with DBA and so on, and maybe we need to have a validation program that the restaurants can buy into and so on. But I agree. It's time to start building that fund up for the parking structures. So those were my comments regarding that specific point. And then the public participation, I'm a big fan of that. And the more we can do on the web where people can go in and drill down into our budget and so on. I think the first effort we did was 2012 or something with that, and then updated it and so on. But that is a very important tool, I think, for our residents to be able to really drill down and see over time and currently how we spend money or where money comes from. So thank you for everything you do. I really appreciate it. And that's it, Mayor.
Councilmember Puzza.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for your report. Congrats on all the awards and accomplishments that you and your office have received. You are a translator of sorts into the finance world. I am very concerned about the budget. I'd be willing to see that report. I think it's really important, and that line item, or, you know, the category to have the long-term costs is really important. I was a HOA president, and we did a thing called the Reserve Study, looked at similar kind of things of the shelf life of the building, and it was a real big wake-up call for all the residents. Yeah, this office obviously reveals a lot of important data that we, you know, you share with us frequently. So as far as the work plan that you've shared, really appreciate that. The citywide user fees will be part of the annual update, or it will be updated annually. And the public participation, it was, you know, really well-attended. Did you receive any feedback, or how did you feel about it?
I think it went well. I actually, the, I was very pleased that staff attended in such high numbers in addition to having community members. I've had a number of staff reach out to me about wanting to, you know, who weren't able to make it to watch the link and asking, just wanting to have that information, which I, again, from, we had staff from all different departments. It was, you know, we had refuse staff, staff from HR, staff from housing, staff from planning. It was a really wide sort of capture of all the different departments. So I was pleased to, I was pleased to see that. And I think I've not received really much more public comment about it, but I'm, again, I'm here, I'm open to whatever questions people have. We are really trying to, we've done sort of a preliminary overhaul, again, with just not having, we don't necessarily always have the graphic resources. I think Elizabeth and I have that in our background, so we're trying very hard to make sure that our webpages are more penetrable than you would typically find so that people can get the information they want. So I'm, I'm open, but I'm, I think that all the stuff I heard was positive and I hope that was the case for people.
I've heard at least of one or two, at least from the public, and directed them to the video.
Oh, good.
Or to the website at least. Great. And that's pretty much all I have. I appreciated the debrief at the council retreat that we have. And it looks like that's all I have. Thank you very much and thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Bryan.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And just to follow up on Councilmember Puzza's question, do, do we have numbers on how many people showed up to the workshop?
I don't have an exact count. I think it's, was roughly about 30 people and I'm gonna say it was like half and half, half community, half staff.
And then it was also live, right, on?
No, we, we have a recording of it that people can watch. Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah. And I do want to shout out to my Finance Advisory Committee members because three of them showed up and two of them were the new appointees. So I appreciated that they really dug in and wanted to learn about the budget. So that was great.
Yeah, definitely something to do again.
Yeah.
Just one or two questions wrapped in one. In terms of forecasting, I'm curious, I'm hearing the Fed is projecting three rate cuts this year, hopefully. Are your people telling you that means that we will hopefully see more real estate transactions in the coming months? And, and maybe that's why we haven't seen any because people are holding on to selling?
Yeah, I imagine that, I have not heard anything specifically and maybe, you know, Econ Dev hears more about that.
I, I think something to think about with regard to the real estate transfer tax is to think about both the residential component and the commercial component. The commercial real estate sector is, it is bad. I keep reading more articles, you know, their, their values, commercial real estate values have, I saw, they're probably gone down 40% at least in value. There's, there's a lot of extend and pretend going on. There's, there's some turmoil coming. We, we haven't, we haven't, banks, there's probably gonna be collapses of some regional banks that are holding a lot of debt. So this, that, the whole commercial real estate component is kind of frozen right now. I think that's probably, I think it's probably more that than the residential that's affecting our situation.
I mean, because that's where the, the revenue comes from, right? It's the, it, the residential is a very small piece and certainly those sales are, for the most part, are trending half of what they were two years ago, right? So in the, we have tracking on residential, but it's the commercial sales that can generate more of that transfer tax revenue. And those, those are the ones that are not happening really at all. And so those receipts remain very low.
Right. And we're still lagging on business license? We, we don't know what those dollars are yet?
We are, we are getting close to having better numbers, but it is looking like I can comfortably say we are meeting our budgeted amount. I can say that with great confidence that we have met our budgeted amount. How, how well we do, we're gonna know better, I think, as we get through the end of this month and through April so that by the time we come back in May, we should have a comfortable projection for you for next year's budget and that will help inform our revenue projections going into 2425.
Okay. And then I was checking today, the performance of the market. Last year was down like eight percent and this, this year up like 30%. So that impacts our pensions, right?
Yes. So, and it takes a couple of years, so two things. One, it affects the city's investments, right? So our pension fund is invested with more flexibility, right? We keep a lot of our other reserves in, in conservative things, but even those are getting more return than we did. The pension fund is, is getting good return. So that's good for that, that reserve as, and building it a little bit. And in addition then, it means that CalPERS, when we hear how CalPERS ended the year, they will probably have done well. But it usually takes a couple of years for that to hit their RUAL and, and we'll know how much we owe.
The, the way to think about CalPERS, I'm trying to remember what the current CalPERS discount rate is. I think it's six and three-quarters. Does it, is that what it is?
I think that's correct.
So let's say, let's just say it's six and three-quarters. That's their assumption. Right now, the, their assumption is they've got to make at least six and three-quarters. If they make less than six and three-quarters, our unfunded liability goes up. Now, if they make more than six and three-quarters, that helps. But, you know, and it's like in a year where they lose six, it's like, well, we didn't get six and three-quarters and they went negative six. It's like 12 and three-quarters behind. So that's the thing to keep in mind about stock market returns and, and CalPERS. It's, the total, the total annual return needs to approach seven every year, just, just for us to stay even.
And how does the state budget situation impact us locally?
Well, it, they're already freezing a lot of the money that we would have hoped to get. Their, their deficit is projected, they've, they've frozen all the money for housing and homelessness, all the things that we were, you know, that the League of California Cities is lobbying for them to help cities with, right? Helping us with our operational funds. That money's gone. The capital money for those grant programs is being frozen. I think they're trying to delay other payments where they can. So it just means that there's less money for our departments, like, as, you know, I know, I've been listening, everybody, we're always looking for grants, our departments really are, and we're trying to support them in that. But the state's not gonna have those dollars to give us.
You know, I'm always a bit prone to paranoia, but I'm a little worried about our 17 million for streetlights.
I was gonna say the same thing. I had heard, and I'll hear a little more tomorrow at a, I'm, at a League of Cities Policy Committee meeting, they'll do a budget up, Sacramento Budget Update. But the last time I heard one, they talked about them freezing a lot of those things that had been awarded. And I, I was also thinking about that 17 million because they had not dispersed it to us. So they could just delay it for, you know, forever, for, yeah.
And then, if I recall hearing, the, the state budget's heavily impacted by capital gains, right? Like market returns. So this year being a good year, not, we won't see it now, but potentially in the next year.
The, the state budget is affected a lot by the, the, the wealth in the state. And when, when the wealthy portion of California doesn't do well in the market, it has a big effect.
Right.
Right.
That, this big 12-year rolling performance is, is good for us from a state budgeting perspective. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the presentation and for your work, you and your team's work. How many staff members do you currently have on your team? I know you talked about hiring some folks and some attrition.
We have 35.
Thank you. And in terms of, I know participatory budgeting has been something that we've, or I've brought up several times over my course of years in the council. Is that still something? I know there's a cost and I know community or public participation is listed as a priority. Is that still something? I know in the past you had listed cost being a barrier and some other concerns to participatory budgeting, but I just wanted to see sort of what your thoughts were on that at this time.
I think, I think there is a cost. I think that in order to do it, there, the council would have to identify some pot of money that, you know, for a capital project that some, you know, that's typically what cities do. They identify some pot that is going to be a part of the process, but then there are also the costs in terms of implementing the, the program and making it really viable. And when we were discussing it with the Participatory Budget Project, that nonprofit group, there were consultant costs, which were, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then there was staff time and their recommendation was that it was two 100% dedicated FTEs to really run a, a real viable project. So at this point, that's not sustainable. That hasn't been sustainable in the budget or with the staff resources we currently have. So I think we've been trying to think of other ways to, to increase engagement. I think one of the goals of participatory budgeting is to get people just to understand and engage with a city and how the budgeting works. So I, I'm try, you know, we're trying to think of other ways to reach out. Again, as Councilmember Puzza said, I really, I do see my role as a translator. I, because my background is very diverse, I think I have the ability to bridge the, you know, the dense budget documents and what those all mean and, and make them more accessible to the public. So I am constantly thinking about how we can do that.
Thank you for that. Again, congratulations on the community workshop or presentation. Considering it was torrentially raining at the time of the workshop, it's really a success that there was, in my opinion, anyone there at all. I thought twice myself before I got in the car because it was a lot of rain outside. So I think that it was, I think if it wasn't raining, I think there would have been significantly more folks in the room. But with that in mind, is the, or what, what is the goal or frequency for that type of community engagement?
You know, I'm certainly, well, again, my, I was very pleased by the, that there was actually turnout. My experience in my career is that when we are having budget conversations, usually no one is in the room. So the public is interested until it's the budget meetings and then they're not there. So I was not, I did not have high hopes for turnout and I was really pleasantly surprised again, considering the rain, it was, it was impressive that people turned out. So I am more than happy to do that again and, and make it available to people. I think as what might be interesting and as we begin to roll out the CIP new program and portal, I think that is something that people are very interested in. And I know the city managers talked to me about really putting together a longer-term CIP program and in consultation with the departments, particularly Public Works and Transportation. Maybe there are some things, this year it's gonna be rough because we're just implementing it, but I think ongoing, we could begin to, to look at a way to have some public meetings around those things that might draw people.
Sure. Just to, it's the middle of the workday, so I think anytime, even with the virtual option, it's difficult for, I mean, most folks work.
Yeah.
So I think that is a large reason why we struggle with attendance at these meetings. And the audience is not for the public, so there's not a lot of explanation about acronyms or maybe even like some of the timelines that we're familiar with. So this kind of process can be a little, could be more difficult for folks who are not in the weeds or at every city council meeting. So that could be a part of the reason why the point of entry might be a little more difficult for these meetings. But in that, in the same kind of lane, I was looking or reflecting back at the priorities from last year for your team and your office. Are we, is the budget and brief documents, are they in place?
So we have a design and we did sort of, it took us a while, again, because of some staffing challenges, we have something designed for the current, that we use the current year budget to design. So I think as we're moving forward in this year's budget, we'll be able to do that more timely. And we are working right now on the PAFR for, we've completed the ACFIR and submitted it. The PAFR is being compiled right now, so we'll be able to put that document out soon. I, I have talked to our communications manager to, about potentially doing some video, short videos. Not, not everybody will want to sit through the entire community budget meeting. It was lengthy, but maybe there are some things we can do to talk about specific topics in a shorter way that might get people interested.
That's a wonderful idea. So plus one for that. I think that would be really good in, in terms of meeting neighbors where they are and a lot of folks are online and making sure that they're hearing directly from you or yours, members of your, your staff, if you're comfortable with that. I think that is an excellent idea. I noticed that almost all of the budget presentations are online except for the last year's budget on the budget page. Or actually, never mind, it is, is in the top. It's not on the, it says previous annual budget documents. Okay, never mind. So, so we're all up to date on that and so thank you for having those documents available and accessible for the public. And I do, sometimes our, just to flag, our city council notes are not Ctrl+F searchable, but I am very appreciative in terms of like searching for a specific, I'm interested in transportation, I'm interested in parks, so you can Ctrl+F our documents for the budget. But unfortunately for our, like, city council meetings, we can't. I don't know what the functionality is, but I'm just grateful that particularly for a document as, as, you know, as robust as our budget, that folks are able to sort of drill down into the item that is, that they might be more interested in. There's nothing to report, they're doing really well there, so that's great. But I'm just questioning or curious about our frequency of audits and I know that there is a process for the awards, I don't know. So I'm just curious about what the audit process is. It made me think about, well, I don't know what the process is for audits for our city, so just wanted to ask in this forum.
So we, the city undergoes an annual audit and we have an outside audit firm. And in fact, I believe you and the Vice Mayor are on our audit subcommittee.
Oh, let me have a meeting, girlfriend.
We are going to because we are going to be going out to bid for a new audit firm. We've had this audit firm for three years and the subcommittee is, will be part of the.
Process.
Process. So that's underway. But we do have an annual audit. The auditors review all of our programs. They are the ones who help us prepare the ACFIR, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. We submit that to GFOA every year. In addition to now, we are submitting the PAFR. We also submit our budget documents every year to them. So we have, there's very robust auditing that is done, you know, internally with, by this outside firm. In addition, we are, we undergo annual audits from Metro for other federal things. Right now, our auditors are also completing the single audit, which is for the federal government, for all federal funds that the city gets. That's, that's submitted, it has to be submitted by the end of this month. And other granting agencies require us to do audits. So our accounting team is very busy responding to. accounting team is very busy responding to audit requests and producing documents all the time. So our records are regularly reviewed.
And my last question, really just stemmed from the community. But I, and I guess it's sort of how our information or what pots our information is presented in. So in particular, when you were going over the pie charts in the community budget meeting, which I thought were really great and a great visual aids, I noticed that the police budget was about, it was like twenty something, I can't remember, twenty something percent. And that made me, I was like, oh, that, that, because when I was running for office, it was like thirty seven percent or something. So I was wondering how, if that has, I don't think we've reduced our police budget. So I was wondering, is it like a different pot of money or how we present our information? Has it shifted? So I was just curious about the presentation.
So in, in some cases, we've presented, and, and usually we present both. We present them as a, as a piece of the, just the general fund. And then we've been trying to show all of our funds together because the, when you just show the general fund, you're not showing transportation, you're not showing refuse and sewer, like all those other funds that make up the full city budget. So we've, we do tend to focus a lot on the general fund because that is our most flexible pot of money. But then I think there is sometimes confusion when we talk about this much bigger budget number. What is that? You know, it jumps by, you know, a hundred million or more and then you're, and so it was a, a factor of the whole. So it included all those other funds and departments that are not part of the general fund.
Got it, got it. Okay. That was helpful because I was like, I must have missed something. Okay, wonderful. Well, I'm very grateful for that explanation. I really appreciate your interest in ensuring that we remain solvent and, you know, that is consistent with our overall goals. And very interested in continuing to educate our community about our priorities and how we're moving forward with them. So I thank you for your leadership in that respect and for your support this evening or this afternoon. So unless there are any other public comments or comments from my colleagues, which I don't see, thank you so much for their presentation.
Thank you.
Attorney, and also City Clerk. My name is Michelle Hamilton, Senior HR and Equity Manager, and I am here to present the Human Resources Department Work Plan along with my colleague Amalia Sanchez, Risk Manager. I am honored to speak on behalf of our Director, Dana Anderson, while she is on a well-deserved vacation. And I also want to publicly thank the entire HR team for all of the hard work that they do each and every day to support not only the city's goals, but the departments, the employees, and interested candidates wishing to, wishing to join the city. Next slide, please. Positioning the city to become an employer of choice underscores the Human Resources Department's commitment to maintaining a high-quality work environment at the city of Culver City. Those efforts include three principles. At the top of the list is recruitment and retention of top talent. The city offers a comprehensive and competitive benefits package. We exercise out-of-the-box recruitment strategies to fill positions and our hiring practices are diversity and inclu, and inclusion-focused. Our other efforts include deployment of equity and diversity initiatives to promote diversity and inclusion training and development. We also provide guidance and support to operating divisions, which means implementation of training and development for staff to ensure compliance and exceptional customer service. And we proactively and consistently review policies and processes to align with compliance and current industry standards. Next slide. To support HR's core value of maintaining a high-quality work environment, the risk management team proactively preserves both the physical and human assets of Culver City, which requires the identification, the assessment, and control of the city's exposure to various risks. The appropriate procurement and understanding of insurance to protect the city's assets along with the management of the return-to-work program and workers' compensation claims that are filed by injured workers. And importantly, development of safety administration policies, processes, and practices along with training and compliance. Next slide. Human Resources also supports the following CBCs. The Civil Service Commission, and right now, some of the project highlights for that commission include the resurrection of the employee recognition event and updates to the civil service rules that are currently in progress. The Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee, also known as ERAC, has been focused on the preparation of several statements, including anti-Semitism, land acknowledgement, and more recently, recommendations for the PRCS bathroom ordinance. In addition, ERAC continues to develop, to develop events under the Anti-Hate and Race Relations Series and held a courageous conversations workshop this week to continue with that work. With the recent approval of the Racial Equity Action Plan Consultant, ERAC will also be involved in this project. HR staff also supports the ad hoc Equity Subcommittee, which includes Mayor McNoren and Councilmember Puzza. HR has recently been assigned the Interface Council, which is a new endeavor for the department. Next slide. Over the past year, HR has been working diligently to complete a number of critical deliverables which are highlighted below. First and foremost, the Classification and Compensation Study, which is near completion. We launched a new paperless online onboarding process, which has been completed via the NeoGov onboard module, which has improved communications and required documentation completion for new hires in advance of their first day of work. In January, we launched an employee engagement survey and staff is in the process of analyzing those results. The results will help us to determine employee satisfaction, passion factors, workplace climate, and other items that will assist the city in outlining retention strategies. We also secured a new vendor to complete new pre-employment physicals, which has reduced the process from an average of thirty days, which we were seeing last year, down to several days. So this has been a big change for HR and it has certainly helped with filling those positions on a more rapid basis. Also, employee appreciation and wellness incentives. HR has planned several employee appreciation events, including the Summer Social, the Employee Recognition Event, a Wellness Fair, and have also communicated wellness initiatives with an emphasis on behavioral health tools. Equal Opportunity, Equal Employment Opportunity Plan, also known as the EEO. There has not been a complete citywide EEO plan released in a while, but this project is in process and is a priority for HR. The Historical Context Study has been completed and is the launch pad for the upcoming Racial Equity Action Plan. The last item on the slide, contract management for HR programs and services. Through the procurement process, HR has implemented a number of contracts that have either helped to streamline administrative services and or consolidate services under a single vendor for cost effectiveness. Next slide. In terms of risk management, there has been a focused effort to complete all the insurance renewals for the upcoming year. There is an implementation of a new Certificate of Insurance Tracking System that will help to improve overall record-keeping, streamline communications with vendors, help with required coverage limits, and also automate the process for efficiencies. To ensure employee safety, a new injury and illness prevention plan is in progress. In addition, in order to be in compliance with a new requirement that becomes effective on July 1st of this year, risk management will be releasing a workplace violence prevention policy. The drug and alcohol policy has been updated and is currently under review. And last but not least, risk management works closely with the Department of Transportation to fulfill requests for information so that the city remains in compliance with their standards. Next slide. In terms of our work plan priorities, as we moved into, move into the next fiscal year, I mentioned that the city is launching a Racial Equity Action Plan and King Consulting has been selected as the vendor that staff will be working with on this major project. The purpose of the REAP, as we refer to it, is to develop and implement a plan to increase racial equity across all city operations. This project will also involve community engagement as well, and we are looking forward to launching the REAP. In addition to that, HR will continue to outline trainings on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We have extended DEI training to city council members and to executive staff, and we are currently outlining a citywide training plan for employees and will continue to foster community, community engagement in this arena through the ERAC. HR is requesting twenty five thousand dollars for the implementation of the REAP and an additional forty thousand to fund various diversity trainings. Next slide. As a work plan priority, HR is revising the current anti-discrimination, harassment, and retaliation policy. And we're also looking at ways to streamline the process for employees to report their concerns and also to have ample staff that are trained to not only to support the complaint intakes, but to also coordinate investigations. We are also looking at ways to separate the mechanism that the community uses to report complaints versus internal employee complaints via the portal. Therefore, we are requesting a total of two hundred thousand dollars to cover the cost of additional staff and completion of intake portal improvements for the community as well as the staff. Next slide. For employee development, HR has prioritized employee health and wellbeing, which employees seem to be engaged in and appreciative of. HR is committed to supporting this and want to continue to demonstrate a high level of care to our workforce and recognition of the work that they do to keep the city running. In consideration of our reachable goal of becoming an employer of choice for this region, we want to look at implementing citywide training to address skill gaps and interview skills so that individuals are prepared to promote within the city as well as ensuring that our workforce has the necessary skills to perform in their current positions, in addition to providing training on actively practicing safety on the job. We also want to enhance professional development to have a prepared workforce in terms of succession planning when people retire, promote, or resign. In terms of these items, HR is requesting seventy five thousand dollars for citywide staff professional development trainings, seventy five thousand for safety program support and consultative services, and fifty thousand dollars for health and wellness initiatives. Next slide. One of our work plan priorities in becoming an employer of choice and also improving citywide efficiencies was to examine how can we transform a lot of the paper that we use into a digital format. We looked at about fifty to sixty forms and documents that we use and have digitized them to improve the new hire experience and are now looking at developing an electronic policy library for new and ongoing employees so that employees will have a one-stop shop in terms of locating all of the city's policies on our public-facing website. We are also working toward a benefits library to ensure that employees have access to benefit communications as well. We have automated some of the tasks related to onboarding, including offer letters and other recruitment-related communications. We are testing analytic processing behind the scenes that will also help to, to enhance communications with candidates. And we are proactively staying abreast of new innovations in the industry, especially among public sector employees, so that we can align ourselves with whatever is new and innovative that will draw viable candidates to the city. HR is collaborative with IT Finance and other departments in its approach to fulfilling its core values and work plan priorities. And with IT Finance, we have prioritized implementing industry-standard formatted data files to support ongoing benefits eligibility and plan administration. Next slide. This concludes the slide presentation, and I would like to end by stating that our mission in Human Resources is to, to develop the best workforce possible and provide exceptional customer service to Culver City residents, visitors, and to our internal stakeholders, being the departments and the employees of the city. And how we do that is by the following principles: evaluate, partner, engage, plan, and facilitate. Amalia Sanchez and I are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time as well as your attention today.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public on the side? No? City Clerk? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vera.
Thank you. Ms. Hamilton, Ms. Sanchez, thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate all the hard work and detail into it. In terms of department-wise, I mean, in your department, are there any deficiencies in terms of staffing right now?
Well, I will say that in terms of employee complaints and looking at the safety initiatives that we want to fulfill for the city, there is a need to make sure that we do have ample staff that can review complaints, coordinate investigations, so that we are responsive in that arena. And then also having safety personnel to fulfill those initiatives as well that we talked about in the presentation.
Yeah, I saw in here about the, the onboarding of a citywide safety officer. Is that underway currently or?
That is a request that the Director has moved forward, but not sure if that is going to come into fruition. So we do have Plan B if.
That's a new position request.
Right, okay.
And I don't think you have any vacancies right now, do you?
No vacancies?
No, we, we're filled. We have seventeen full-time employees and one retired new attend. So all of our vacancies are filled.
Ms. Hamilton, I really appreciate your hard work. You know, I love the bullet points in terms of, you know, REAP and glad to see that hopefully moving forward without any hitches as well as, you know, the DEI training and belonging. So I, a lot of great work ahead. I think there's going to be more conversation as we get into the budget next month or so. But I really appreciate both of your presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Erickson.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you for what your department has done to speed up filling vacancies in several departments in the city. It's, it's really crucial. And I know there is still work to be done there. We still have vacancies in some departments that are affecting service. So therefore, for me, the absolute most important and really the core function of HR is to assist departments in, in filling their vacancies. And this also includes, of course, succession planning and skills gap training. But I'm specifically thinking about the Transportation Department that where we've seen issues with, with service levels and so on because there isn't enough of operators. So whatever your department can do to assist departments in quickly filling positions, I think that's actually right now is the most important thing that, that your department can do. I think that's actually, right now, is the most important thing that your department can do. I have a question. There was, there was sort of a legislation passed with regards to cannabis testing and that we cannot use that as an employer anymore because we cannot say it was used recreationally or on the job and so on. I wonder if you have, I saw you were going to look at sort of drug and alcohol policies and so on. I wonder, how will that affect us? Because we have so many individuals operating equipment and vehicles and so on. So is that part of that review?
That will be part of the drug and alcohol policy review. And so because that law is new, it's kind of being kicked around by the employment lawyers at this point. Everyone has interpretation, but when we come out with the policy, we will have the accurate information that will apply to the city.
Okay, but we are staying on top of it.
Oh, yes, definitely. That's a huge, huge law.
Yeah, I know. And then I asked this last year also, and I, so I am going to ask the same thing now. So, you know, we started up ERAC, and one of the functions with ERAC was that they were going to field complaints from people that felt that they had been mistreated, wronged, you know, abused for different reasons, right? So I wonder, so how many complaints has been filed with ERAC so far this fiscal year? And how many complaints has been filed totally that ERAC has dealt with?
So to give the scope of how we look at complaints when they come in, if the complaint is something that would fall under our purview, we would handle it. A lot of times the complaints that come in, we have seen actually come from out of state. Somehow, our site is popular. We get complaints from Texas, things that do not necessarily apply to us. There are some times when complaints come in through that complaint about the police department that doesn't fall under the ERAC purview. For this year, I would say that there have been a handful of complaints, but mainly those came from employees. And so that's why we're looking at ways to separate where the complaints go. Because if an employee is complaining about something that is occurring at the city, that wouldn't be under the ERAC purview. So ERAC hasn't really had an opportunity to review items like that because there hasn't been any that would fall under them. So either it's erroneous, or it's something related to the police department or something related to a personnel matter. That's what I, at least I have seen thus far.
Okay, that sort of takes care of my second question, which was if there were a trend and what we then could learn from that and what we needed to do and so on. But thank you for that. So, and that actually, yeah, that was my question. Thank you. And thank you for getting staffing levels up. And now, you know, we have the transportation department left. That's a challenge, I know, but.
Yes, so I will say, I did, I was here yesterday for the presentations and I noted your comment about coming down to a 4% vacancy rate. When Dana Anderson came to the city in 2022, the vacancy rate was at 22%. And we're, right now, we're right under 9%, but it had actually dropped down to 7% late last year. But with the retirements, we're now back up to slightly under 9%. But our goal for natural attrition is 5%, but I will share your 4% forecast with her.
I want to set those goals that really, you know, really is after.
So we're chipping away at the numbers, so.
Good. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Puzan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation and for all your work. HR is a varied and ever-changing field. And I want to share my colleagues' sentiments about you've been busy hiring people and many more positions to fill. Kudos to bringing back the employee recognition event. I think that's really important to just recognize people, however very small that is. The next step in our city's racial reckoning process is REAP. Hopefully bring about some tangible action items. The seeds we plant today will be in, you know, 100 years in the next historical context study. I don't know if this will come out in REAP or in the DEI trainings, but I'm hoping that we get some training specifically for white-identified folks. And we have to be very careful and intentional how we frame and communicate that affinity group work. But a lot of times, I think, white people think that racial equity work is only for people of color. And it's really mostly, in my opinion, and other people, it's white people's work. So I'm hoping that we can have some of that training and I can bring that up in the Equity Subcommittee as well. Thank you for the report and all the work that you do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation, Ms. Hamilton, Ms. Sanchez. Mostly just reiterating what my colleagues have said about, I'm really happy that we're strengthening the employee recognition, employee wellness programs. I think after COVID, we know that, you know, personal wellness has become a very big issue, mental health. So I'm glad that we're making a focus on that and definitely shining a light on employees that, you know, do well and do well for our city. I really appreciate that. Something I would, it was brought up, I think by myself and others, last year was for new council members, if we can, seeing as we've got an election this year, somehow have them ready to hit the ground running. I don't know if it's legally allowed for forms to be filled out before they're elected, just so that it's, it's ready to be stamped and approved and they can get going and all of the, you know, as much of the training is available. I don't know why someone couldn't be trained before they start a job, but that was, it made things, I don't know about Councilmember Puzo, but it, that transition from public citizen to, you know, civil servant was rocky for a month because I felt like I was scrambling.
Vice Mayor, you mean after the election before you take office?
Or even maybe it's part of the packet when you, when you file. I don't know. I mean.
I don't think you could do it before you're elected.
Okay, but, but so it's close to after the election is possible.
Yeah.
I, I feel like I.
We recall this issue being brought up at last year's work plan discussion, and Dana and I did talk about that. I think there is a shared responsibility in terms of bringing on new council members. So we will work behind the scenes because there, there is some information that HR is responsible for, but there's some information also that the city clerk is responsible for too. So we'll just partner together to kind of close those gaps.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so I brought that up last year. And I think that actually the city manager's office is a portion of this, right? Because I think, you know, all the paperwork and all the formal stuff ends up with your department. But, you know, for instance, I bring up different reports. I think there are certain reports that we have produced a year, two years, three years prior that an incoming council member actually would have great value of getting. But I'm going to bring up a few things when we get to the city manager. But I, I think city manager's office actually has a big portion in this onboarding.
Yeah, and maybe there's a, even for all candidates, there's maybe a meeting ahead of time to say, you know, hey, if you get elected, this is what's going to be happening, just to give you a heads up so that they're prepared to be prepared, I think would be helpful. And then I really appreciate all the forms being digitized that you're doing. I would, I've heard that not all of our city's online forms are digitally fillable. Sometimes you have to download them and then find a way to either mail them or, yeah, so it'd be great if they're all fillable.
Yes, we're making that transition.
Great.
But we started with the new hires, so.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. And then I think the only, the last thing that I wanted to ask was insurance. I know that we have, you know, small organizations that try to hold events in parks or, or, you know, even in public spaces and that $3 million insurance premium is required. Is that needed across the board or is that?
Let me address that. The reason it's three and six is because that's, that's our deductible.
Right.
And so we're trying to shift the risk instead of the, instead of the general taxpayer absorbing the risk, the city absorbing the risk for that event. Because if we don't shift the risk, then that's who's bearing the risk is, is the city, the general taxpayer. And we realize that, we try to get it as often as we can, but we try to be flexible and then flex when we need to flex. And there's, right now, it's, it's, you know, we don't have a policy. If the council wants to create a policy, we could. But I actually think there's, there's an advantage to the current approach, even though it creates some tension and some people bristle about it. We usually are able to arrive at a place where things work. And then we still maximize shifting risk as much as possible. But, but it's, ultimately, it's a council policy. If the council is uncomfortable with that approach, we'll, we would, of course, always accept your direction.
Well, I think that's fair as long as organizations realize that it's not a hard and fast number and they can have conversations to evaluate the risk level.
If we announce to the world that we negotiate this.
Yeah. I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and I appreciate the questions and comments already. You mentioned that your office has 17 employees. Do you mind, I don't know if you, I don't think you shared this, but what's the total number of Culver City employees? I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. We currently have close to 800. I think the number settles around 775-ish.
And that's full-time, right?
Hmm, that's total population. And then full-time, about 600 or so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's helpful. Do we have like information about like the average tenure of a Culver City employee? Is there that close of a look at, you know, how long folks are staying as we're trying to add and as folks leave?
We looked at it for succession planning, but I didn't bring those numbers today. I do know that Culver City has an older population. Average age is mid-30s, early 40s. So we tend to be a little on the older side in terms of cities.
And Mayor, I don't think, it'd be interesting to see the data, but I don't think we have quite the retention that we once did. And maybe Heather, who's been here a while, can confirm. But there was a time when I think the benefits here were so strong and so, so, you know, so well in the employees' favor that there were, we didn't have a lot of employees that were leaving when I first got here. But I think what's changed the landscape is that the benefits are not what they were 15 or 20 years ago.
Yeah, in addition to COVID, the great resignation, people have way more choice. A lot of 100% remote working from home, so there's just a lot of options out there. So although it's four years later, we're still in the aftermath of what was called the great resignation. So we're having to get very creative in terms of attracting people in our recruitment efforts, making more personable advertising instead of saying, oh, we have a job open. We have to create verbiage that speaks personally to the individual to kind of draw people in and, you know, tell them about the benefits and things like that. So, yeah, there's a number of things that impact retention.
Sure. I'd be curious if y'all have it available, not to create more work, but if it's available. Would like to kind of see those trends as well as if we have some, I don't know, demographics. The management meeting this morning, you know, they went over everything. And a part of it was HR, and so it was interesting to see, you know, the demographics of the employees at Lassa, the average ages. They have a lot of investments in employee resource groups. I'm not sure if we're doing those kind of investments here. So I'm just curious to kind of see like a snapshot of what, what our total, if we have information about all 800 or so, or if it's just focused on the 600 that are more full-time. I assume part-time is probably more parks and rec kind of employees.
Part-time could be across the board. Transportation, for example, when bus operators are hired, they're hired as a regular part-time employee and then they graft into the bus operator position. So we can pull a snapshot and, you know, like I said earlier, we are working toward the complete EEO plan, but we can pull data to see what our demographics look like now.
Okay, great. That was actually one of my, so I noticed the EEO plan was on the work plan last year and it's carried over this year. Do we think, is there like an estimated time or are there specific barriers that we could be supportive with?
Well, I can give you a little bit of background. So we had started, started working with a consultant on the project. And when it came time for, to complete a certain scope, they didn't apparently understand what the scope of the work was. And so we recently secured another vendor and the contract has been finalized by procurement. So we are hot and heavy starting on that work. So there was a bit of a hiccup in our previous plan due to a change in vendor. So I think we're now on a good track, so.
Great, great news. So do we, you mentioned in the, the work plan mentions professional development as it pertains to succession planning, but do we also think about, I guess that could be sort of, but thinking about specifically retention in terms of like.
Yes, most definitely. In the presentation, I talked about skill sets. So not just skill sets for succession, but skill sets in the current job just to build employee satisfaction, to invest in our employees. And also, we do have a number of employees that do try to promote within the organization. And so I do think there is a need to kind of have some type of interview workshop, that sort of thing. Because when you're interviewing internally, it's a little different feel when you're interviewing outside of the organization. So we're looking at building skill sets, not just for the purposes of succession planning, but also for that person to excel in the position that they currently have.
And for our performance reviews, I know for a little while, I've been talking a bit about like the 360 kind of approach to performance reviews. I know I only see it from the performance reviews that we are a part of. I don't know if they're different from across, you know, across the departments and other levels. But I'm curious about that process. I'm curious about what success looks like or if there are KPIs that various departments are using to ensure that our employees are meeting the targets that we have set. So I guess the question is just sort of what does that process look like in terms of evaluation and review and success?
Okay, so that's multi-dimensional. So going back to the NeoGov module where we house the performance evaluations, we have started a project with all of the departments to, first of all, reset what is in NeoGov to make sure that the system has. to make sure that the system has the correct hierarchy, the correct reports, and that we have set the clock appropriately on those evaluations. And in the interim, departments can do paper evaluations that, you know, we're tracking. In terms of working with the departments on evaluating employees and giving that feedback, one of the things that we have done, especially for the probationary period, is to work with the departments when there seem to be performance issues, to help to address them with the employee, come up with training plans, come up with performance plans so that we have done our due diligence before making a personnel decision. And then lastly, in terms of your question about the 360, I think we're not quite there yet. We're trying to rebuild the entire performance evaluation system to make sure that it is absolutely up and running. And we will interject a discussion on having the 360. But I will say, on an as-needed basis, HR has had those discussions with both employee and supervisor side by side to discuss those issues and to come to some sort of workable relationship. So right now, more so on a case-by-case basis. But in terms of the performance evaluation 360, that's, requires a deeper conversation. So I'll put a bug in Dana's ear when she returns.
Wonderful, thanks for that. As well, so you talked a bit about like various trainings. What's the process to determine who conducts various trainings for staff?
It depends. So if we see someone at a conference and we think that they have credentials or they have taught a valuable class, we'll look to bring them to the city, as in the case of the recent situational awareness training that the city conducted about a month or so ago. That was the result of seeing an individual at a conference. We also partner with law firms in the Southern California area. And a lot of the attorneys do teach the classes. Also, by word that, or yes, this person, we've gotten great feedback from staff. So that's typically, you know, how it's done. So we kind of cast a wide net so that it's varied.
So we would never do like a RFP for a kind of training like this?
If, well, right now, we're getting ready to do more of the speaker series, the DEI trainings. And so with the type of training that we want to do, we are required to get three quotes. So there is, that's a semi-RFP, but if we were going to like secure one vendor to do all of our training, then we would do a full-on RFP. But other than that, we can go out and get three or five quotes or whatever.
Thank you for providing some insight on that. My last two, building off of Councilmember Erickson's question, is it pertains to the complaints that are received? What's the process on the community engagement or outreach on that mechanism? I recall, when did Equity and Human Relations Committee come online, 2021 officially, 2020?
I think 22, I thought.
It's time is a construct?
Well, it might be a little older than that.
Okay.
Maybe 21.
I recall that being important in the formation. And then there was issues with like the actual complaint box and making sure that people knew where it was and all of that. But in like, in the 2024 things, I don't recall seeing any like awareness or pushes around like, hey, if something has happened and, you know, you know. So I'm just curious if there's like a comm strategy or is it something that is lifted up in every Equity and Human Relations meeting? Like this is something that we have, we encourage you to share it with your neighbors? Sort of like, is there an outreach strategy about this tool?
So I won't say that it is lifted up in every single ERAC meeting, but what I will say is that we have revamped the Equity page so that the information is more prominent. So before, the page was kind of like just links, 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 links. And now it's organized kind of like tiles, like as you would look at an iPhone. So we made sure that that tile for the complaints is prominent so that people can file a complaint. And also ERAC, they have their, they bring any concerns about people not being able to find information or being aware of information. And so that hasn't seemed to be an issue, at least not of late or in the past year that I've been with the city. People find that website if they want to file a complaint, definitely.
Okay, so the only feedback that I have, just because I'm looking at the page right now, you do have to click on the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee and the second bold down is to submit a complaint, but it's not on the main, main page. So I would just maybe recommend its current and upcoming projects, Culver City Collaborations, Culver City United Against Hate, Equity and Human Relations, Historical Context Study, and past diversity, equity, and inclusion events and efforts. So it might be good to potentially put it on that page, just a feedback. But it is on the, if you click onto the Equity and Human Relations Committee, it is there. So I do appreciate that. And the last piece or the last question to lift up is, how has it been going with equity under HR, if you're able to answer that? I know that some cities have a separate office. I know that in Culver City, we've chosen to have it all housed under HR. Is there a metric for evaluating how that is going? Do y'all ever look and see how, you know, other cities are doing it in terms of benchmarking or for best practices? I just wanted to float that question for you all since this is kind of a new thrust for the city.
Right, so I can tell you, it varies from city to city. Some cities do have a fully separate equity, most have it with HR. It is an important work that we are performing, so we so far have made time to do it. We do have our equity analysts. I also am able to utilize the services of one of our staff technicians and also another analyst maybe 20% of the time. So, so far, we are able to meet the demands, but we know that the REAP is coming, we know that this DEI training is coming. And so I will say, right now, we don't know what we don't know. So until we kind of get there, then I could say, well, hey, this is how it is now and this is what we need. But, you know, I think for the most part, because we're so dedicated and goals-oriented, we just do the work, you know what I mean? So, but of course, we're looking at adding more. So when we get there, we'll probably be coming back and saying, hey, we need help.
For sure. And just to be clear, what's the breakdown of FTEs on the equity work for the city right now?
So I would say one, about maybe 3.0 altogether collectively.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation. I'm not seeing any additional green lights. So thank you for the work that you all do for the city and thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council. I am Michelle Williams, the city's Chief Information Officer, and I will be presenting the Information Technology Department Work Plan Priorities for Fiscal Year 2425. Next slide. The IT department is a support organization. Our mission is to provide technology services that align with the city's strategic vision, enhance the productivity of city departments, and facilitate access to public information with the overarching goal of transparency. To that end, we have a number of core functions which are listed here. And I won't speak to each one, but it just serves to present to you at a high level the functions that drive our daily operations. We are a centralized IT department, so we support all city departments. We handle the technology support and needs with regard to networking, security, hardware, enterprise software, and we also provide graphic reproduction, postal mail handling, and shipping services. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank and commend the IT department staff as they are all dedicated professionals who are passionate about technology and the support that they provide every day. Next slide. Our work plan priorities will be discussed over the next few slides. And the first effort listed is to enhance the city's data protection strategy. We currently meet industry backup standards, but we are striving to exceed the standard. Like many organizations, we store backups in multiple locations and in multiple format and media type. However, as we look at ways to further enhance our security posture, we are recommending expanding our backup strategy to add an additional off-site location. Through the city manager's office, I will be providing the city council with a cybersecurity update in April, as I did last year, and that will be provided to you before our budget review in May. And in that report, this proposed effort will be further detailed. Next slide. Wi-Fi deployment to city parks. This priority has been on the IT work plan for a while now, but it is ongoing and continues to move forward in collaboration with the PRCS department. We plan on completing this effort next fiscal year. In working with our municipal fiber network operator, we have a plan to deliver a proof of concept later this fiscal year with a prioritized rollout extending through next fiscal year. The department will request additional CIP funding to support this effort. Through our IT Public Safety Division, we will continue to partner with the Police Department to facilitate the implementation of technology projects that have been identified to support enhanced efficiency and transparency. And these are the same projects which Chief Sims spoke to on yesterday. The effort to update our city council chambers audiovisual system has been delayed due to staffing resource limitations. But I am happy to report that I do have a draft RFP that is planned to be released in April in coordination with the city clerk's office. Pending the selection and contract execution with a vendor, we plan for the work to commence next fiscal year. This slide speaks to our partnership with the Transportation Department as they continue to implement technology to support and enhance their operations. And I know Diana is up later this afternoon, so you will hear more about their technology that is underway. Another partnership is with our Public Works Department, and this project has already been spoken to by the Public Works Department on yesterday and also by finance. So this is an enhancement to their routing and billing systems with regard to refuse collection. I do want to state that I have highlighted department partnerships with a few departments, but I don't want to minimize the collaborative work that we share with each city department. I have highlighted these three because they have larger-scale projects planned for next fiscal year. But as I've already mentioned, IT's core function is to support departments in their technology improvements and implementations. Lastly, IT staff continues to review and evaluate technology that supports our remote office telework staff. This is, of course, balanced with making sure we enhance security. However, we are confident that a savings can be achieved for remote staff by reducing their hardware footprint. Rather than having a desktop in the office and a laptop, we are exploring options to remove the desktop in the office in favor of a docking station for the laptop in the office. So as we look to replace hardware in the office, this is what we're going to be exploring where appropriate when staff are, have a remote schedule. This, however, will mean implementing a hardened protocol for those laptops. They will need to be locked down and actively managed so that we can appropriately wipe them and remove all city data when necessary. With approved funding, we plan to initiate a pilot program and deliver a proof of concept. This concludes the presentation. We welcome your questions and direction.
Thank you. Do we have any comments on this?
Still none.
Okay. Councilmember Vera.
Ms. Williams, thank you so much for your presentation. You know, none of this would be, really mean a whole lot without the data protection. So I'm really glad that our team is focusing. And thank you to the team also, by the way. IT is such an integral part of keeping the city fluid and running, so I really appreciate all your work. You know, we just sort of log on to our little iPads or computers and just take things for granted, but there's so much of council equipment. I'm really happy to see that, that is in the works. I think it's long, long overdue. As you were talking about it, we sort of had a frozen screen. I'm like, God, there's prime example, unless you did it on purpose. But I appreciate all your, like I said, all your hard work. The, the remote work aspect in terms of you talking about docking stations inside, is that something that is aspirational or is that something that's going on right now?
So we are starting to update our network infrastructure to support that. And we also have one of our network administrators basically starting a proof of concept, using himself pretty much as the guinea pig. And so we're really trying to explore that because our desktops are approaching end-of-life. And I just think it makes more sense, rather than spending more money towards replacing desktops, if there are staff who work remotely, it makes more sense to provide them with a, you know, full-blown laptop with a docking station so that they can use it in both locations.
All right, I don't really have a whole lot of other questions before you think you went through it. And just to highlight one of your points, that you do interact with every department in the city, not just the ones mentioned. And it's really important knowing that moving forward that, you know, like some of the other departments, you sort of have your, your finger in each department. So I really appreciate you and your team. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Erickson.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I really only have two things. And the first thing is, like my colleague, Councilmember Vera, yeah, it's time to fix this here. It's been embarrassing a lot of times when the system goes down and city clerk ends up with, with a lot of frustrated people out there in the cyber world complaining and so on. So the sooner we can get. So the sooner we can get this project done, the better. I think, I think it was two years ago we actually approved money for it. So anyway, so.
I do want to maybe lower expectations just a little. Because even though we're going to get this all completely redone, it's not going to solve all our problems because we have multiple systems, multiple pieces of software. It's not one thing. And many of our problems oftentimes, sometimes it's Granicus Online. It's not even our, it's complicated. It'll be hopefully better, but I'm certain it's not going to be rock solid even afterwards. So I'm, I just want to put that out there.
Correct. Thank you. No, sincerely, thank you, John, for raising that. Just yesterday, for instance, we had an issue during the budget session. The WebEx audio went out. That was completely out of our control. It was Cisco WebEx platform, which was not functional. And then came back online, I think probably about, what? An hour or so into the meeting.
And meaning Cisco WebEx, if we were in Texas, we would have had this problem.
Yes.
It's nationwide, probably, I'm guessing.
Correct. It's a global issue. Yes.
Yeah, that's why live meetings with like this is the best because it's less of technical interference from a lot of stuff we don't control. So, yeah. My next thing is ties into what you talked about with regard to hardening our system. Yes, we definitely need to harden our system, both electronically but also physical, right? I'm sure you're aware of that. A lot of IT security is actually physical, you know, access and, you know, to buildings and to rooms and to things like that, and to laptops. So I'm happy to hear that you're really taking this very, very seriously because in my mind, you increase the risk when you start having laptops that goes from inside this building to homes. You definitely increase the risk. And you actually, it's very, very hard to harden that, right? Very hard. So, you know, and one solution is, of course, to minimize the number of days and people who actually have that function because it is, it makes it easier if someone really wants to get into our system. It makes it a lot easier if there is a laptop out there that has full access and we are not aware that it has changed hands, right? So move carefully. And I also, for the city manager, would say, you know, people will get this functionality. We should keep it as few as possible because it is a much larger security risk. So happy that you're really looking at all those aspects, absolutely. And that was, that was all. Thank you. Thank you for keeping my email going.
Councilmember Fuzan.
Thank you for the presentation and providing the behind-the-scenes digital connectivity throughout the city. Thanks for being my double and triple check for emails for potential viruses. I just have one quick question. Will the Wi-Fi be at all the parks?
So I have a list here of, I believe we hit every park. Now, I do know that Culver City has some parklets which do not have programming. So we are focused on, let's see, I have 10 parks listed here. And they were given to me by our previous PRCS director, and I'm going to have our new director validate this. But it's prioritized based on programming at that location. So we're hitting 11 locations.
Okay. And will you be able to send that to us?
Oh, yes, most definitely.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Brian.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Williams. Appreciate the presentation and everything that you're doing. Just a couple of questions. Yes, on council chambers. I don't know if it's in the work plan, but if we could have screens here that mimic what we're seeing on the up there. So I don't have to do that thing. It would be great. I don't, I'm sure it's not much of an added expense. Just another iPad. Thank you for that. And a question was raised from one of our commenters at a prior meeting about Wi-Fi on the buses. I know Ms. Chang's here as well. But do we, this person didn't seem to think that we had Wi-Fi on the buses. I thought we did.
We currently do not.
Okay.
Correct. We currently do not, but that is an effort that I know has been, it is in play. I don't know the timetable. Ms. Chang can speak to that specifically.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll ask in 10 minutes. And then I know someone at a local big corporation here that just got hit by ransomware. So I'm just curious, all that backup, is that predominantly what that's for?
Yes, exactly. You guys have heard me say before, it's not a matter of if, it's when, right? So we're always trying to prepare for that type of situation. I'm hoping that we never have to encounter it, but I have to be realistic. But yes, you're absolutely right. Backups are the best method towards recovery. So you don't have to rely on paying a ransom to get your data back, that you can recover from your vault of backups.
I don't know if you would know this. Are we insured for ransomware attacks?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you. And then two more questions. One, when we're doing the chamber updates here, are you going to evaluate whether WebEx is the best software tool to use for, you know, comparing against all the others that are out there? I know, you know, Zoom and Microsoft Teams and all the things, there's a security issue. I personally don't know which is better. I prefer the interface of Zoom better, but I don't know if that's, works well in this world. Is that evaluated?
So I have a personal opinion. When we initially, during the pandemic, rolled out virtual meetings, we had already partnered with Cisco for their WebEx platform. Cisco WebEx has a reputation in the business industry for being a more secure product. Certainly, you're aware of, there's a term now, right? Zoom bombing. So Zoom, at least back then, did not have the reputation for providing a secure platform. Now, certainly, Microsoft Teams has advanced in their functionality over the last number of years. But to answer your question, as a part of this RFP, we were not planning to reevaluate the virtual platform.
Okay. Do you think it's worthy or no? It's, you feel pretty secure with WebEx?
You know, technology changes every day. So I am more than willing to look at it and examine it, certainly.
Thank you. And then my last question, I know that you ran up to me after the, our little get-together or retreat about AI. I'm just curious, could you just, where the city's at in investigating artificial intelligence?
Yes, yes. And I know city attorney Heather Baker on yesterday, she mentioned in the work plan, we have a task force in conjunction with the city attorney's office, the city manager's office. Thank you. I was missing, thank you. And the city clerk as well, where we are evaluating a number of policies. I have asked the city attorney to include AI as another policy that we need to draft for the city. You know, and certainly, machine learning is not new, right? You know, it's been used in the business industry for a number of years. Organizations have used it even for threat detection. But now that it's a mainstream, you know, accessed product, able to be accessed by the average consumer, I think we need to put some guardrails around it. We need to make sure that the use of it is responsible. I'm a proponent for using it. I think that there are good use cases for it being implemented. But I think before we stick our toe in the water, I think we need to have policy that ensures responsible use. So that's what we're looking at first. And that is in process.
Yeah, I agree. And thank you. I'm glad to know that you're, you know, on the cutting edge of that and looking forward. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation and the work of you and your team. To just have a few. But first, thank you for, very pleased to see, echoing my colleagues', the prioritization of moving us forward in this space. So thank you for that. We're looking forward to those advancements. And perhaps there might be, I don't know, maybe a better platform. So I look forward to your leadership in that arena. I just wanted to, I know in the past there was priority for supporting our committees, commissions, and boards and making sure that, you know, they had connectivity. And I just hope that that continues because I think it's in terms of hearing from folks, equity issues, you know, it's certainly important that we keep the lines of communication and connectivity for those spaces as well, for comments and just viewing, to understand what's going on. And very happy to see the Wi-Fi in the parks be a priority as well. We want to get folks outside and also have them remain connected. So very grateful for that. So my only two, just relate to the network infrastructure enhancements that was really one of the priorities last year. I made my screen go off here. That's very strange. Okay, let's join the meeting again. I went like this and the whole thing went out. All right, that's weird. It only did that because I'm talking to you about IT work plan. But I just wanted to know sort of what's happening with Culver Connect and Ting. Are they being successful? Or what's the update for that, if there is one, in terms of adoption, feedback? Has that been a good, you know, investment or choice for us as a city? So just wanted to hear a little bit more about that.
Sure. So in terms of our investment as a city, I would deem that successful. The city has partnered with Onward, which is our partner. And when I say our partner, they are our network operator and they are an ISP. So they are actively obtaining customers who are using our infrastructure. As a part of that agreement with Onward, the city also obtains a revenue share. So we are, again, sustainable in that effort. And so I would say, yes, that is a success. With regard to Ting specifically, I don't have insight into their take rate in terms of their customer base. But certainly, we do know that they also utilize the Culver Connect infrastructure. So again, in that regard, I would deem that a success. And John may have other thoughts.
Then there's the other part of the network that the dark fiber component, which has been invaluable, is invaluable to the success of some of our local corporations. So I think overall, it's been a tremendous success.
Great. I'm glad I asked about it then. All right, well, I, a lot of this is pretty self-explanatory in terms of priorities. And you illuminated a lot of, or explained sort of, you know, where we are and some of the barriers or some of the holes from the past and that's bringing us here. So I'm wishing you much success as you continue to keep the entire city running. I would say, aside from Public Works, we couldn't do it, you know, certain things we just need and we need to be able to get online. So thank you very much, you and your entire team. So look forward to seeing you back again in May. So much.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. This is Diana Chang, City's Chief Transportation Officer. Our department is proud to be celebrating 96 years of continuous service to the community as of this month. And on Monday, we celebrate Transit, we celebrated Transit Worker Appreciation Day. We appreciate all the work that our frontline staff do every day to serve our community. Before I give the presentation, I would like to take the opportunity to recognize the department's leadership team, who are, a group of them are seated there. If you don't mind raising your hands. Some of them are actually just coming back from a training, so they cannot be here. And so our Deputy Transportation Officer, Tamara Fuer, Operations Manager, Nestor Duqueux, Fleet Services Manager, Allison Cohen, Transportation Planning Manager, Dorothy Suchikova, Transportation Administration Senior Management Analyst, Gabe Garcia, Our Safety and Training Coordinator, Hector Calvinessi, Community Engagement Analyst, Dia Turner, Operations Analyst, Ken Bales, Facility Supervisor, Scott Newton, and lastly, Ryan Hunt and Larissa Hogan, our transportation planners. We have a small leadership team with an ambitious work program. Our leadership team has significantly evolved over the past year with new leaders in the deputy, the transportation planning manager, operations manager, and transportation admin senior management analyst roles. And this team here has been demonstrating dedication, teamwork, and resilience with onboarding new staff and expanding their own roles. I'm very proud of them, as well as all of the supervisors, the support staff, and the frontline staff who have continued to show their professionalism and hard work. We will be continuing to complete our team, filling multiple management analyst vacancies and much-needed frontline staff so that we can maintain our core operations and move these major initiatives forward. Also, I would like to congratulate our operators who recently participated in the five-star bus rodeo a couple of weeks back, which is a friendly competition on operator driving skills between several transit agencies in the area. In particular, I would like to congratulate Operator Jennifer Vance for placing first on our agency in the pre-trip exam category, and Operators Gardner Strong, who placed first, and Ken Alexander, who placed second on overall skills amongst all of our Culver City bus operators who participated. Operator Alexander will be representing the city at the regional bus rodeo happening this weekend. Also, I would like to thank the city manager for his guidance and support, and to city attorney's office, Public Works, Planning and Development, IT, HR, and other city departments for their partnership with us throughout the year. Okay. So the, yes, that's correct. Thank you. The Transportation Department's most public-facing function is our transit service. However, our scope extends to all facets of mobility. We partner with our colleagues in Public Works and Planning in addition to other municipal and regional agencies to enhance the quality of life for our residents and visitors through a robust mobility network. We plan, operate, and maintain the movement of our people to, through, and from Culver City, through our service, with our people, and in our culture. And our vision includes rethinking mobility, connecting community by providing convenient, reliable connections for our 33-square-mile service area, and enhancing the quality of life by facilitating public transportation and sustainable mobility services roles in our communities' day-to-day wants and needs. We strive to do this with a holistic approach and with innovation and sustainability in mind to support the growth and long-term vitality of our community. Ultimately, we work to support our community and the region where the freedom to go places is supported by convenient and affordable mobility choices for everyone. So as the Chief Transportation Officer, my focus has been on ensuring long-term financial my focus has been on ensuring long-term financial sustainability of the department, delivering various initiatives and services toward achieving the mobility vision, and supporting employee wellness and creating an environment for our employees to thrive. Next slide, please. The department's four main functional areas include the administration, mobility planning, transit operations, and fleet and facility services. The administration also includes finance, local, regional, and federal grants management, legislation monitoring, research and innovation, community engagement, and safety and training. Research and innovation are essential to everything we do as we always strive to bring in the leading-edge practices and technologies to improve our services and our deliverables. The Culver City Bus System is the crown jewel of our department. We have seven fixed routes and one rapid transit route, and they connect Culver City to many nearby communities such as Venice, Westchester, LAX, Westwood, West LA, Playa Vista, Marina Del Rey, and Century City in our 33-square-mile service area. We're currently providing approximately 84% of our pre-pandemic service hours, a year-over-year increase of nearly 16%. To further improve operations, we plan to deploy a transit ambassador program and utilizing technological innovations to provide enhanced data analysis and on-time performance and improve customer experience. And we're also about to embark on a comprehensive mobility services plan to improve our recommend and improve our service. Our city ride service enhances our city's transit equity, augmenting the fixed route with a dial-or-ride on-demand service for seniors and disabled residents, as well as circulator services connecting our Culver City Middle and High Schools with residential neighborhoods downtown Culver City and the Culver City Arts District, among other areas. This enables us to serve populations who may not be as reachable through traditional bus service. And with the Go Pass program, we offer free transit rides for students, and we're projecting a 64% increase in Go Pass trips this year. As we will discuss later in the presentation, we're looking to use technology to further bolster our dial-or-ride service. And beyond transit, our city share programs include micromobility, employee ride share, and a citywide transportation demand management program, enabling people to get around by active transportation modes such as bike share and scooter and encouraging both employees and residents of the city to take sustainable ways to work. Our fiscal year '25 work plan includes joining the metro bike share program, which will keep us even more connected with the neighboring communities. Our city fleet program not only maintains the 60 transit vehicles and the fleet of transit relief and supervisor vehicles, but also fleets for other city departments such as fire and police, Public Works, and the fleet of city pool vehicles. We also have been working on projects to improve the sustainability of our fleet by assessing the most appropriate zero-emission fleet replacement for different vehicle types. The department also provides mobility planning and management services that goes across all of these service areas, as well as citywide and regional mobility initiatives. We have several important and innovative projects being led through this group, including the Comprehensive Mobility Services Plan, Micro Transit Pilot Project, Move Culver City, and the Transportation Demand Management. Some of these initiatives, as you may recognize, that they have been on our work program for the last couple of years, they have been delayed due to the four vacancies under the mobility planning team. And we're working with HR currently on these recruitment efforts. So in fiscal year '25, our key initiatives will continue to be mobility, zero emissions, technology, and funding. Next slide, please. One of the top priorities for the department is to lead and coordinate on citywide and regional mobility planning initiatives. We will continue to partner with Planning and Development on strategies to achieve the goals of the updated general plan, Mobility Element, with Public Works on citywide mobility initiatives such as Move Culver City and with PRCS on city ride services. We have included priorities around the citywide mobility initiatives, Move Culver City, and the Comprehensive Mobility Services Plan in subsequent slides. As you're well aware, the Olympics are coming to LA in 2028. The Culver City Bus Service Area extends into some of the Olympic venues and connects to other transit service that reaches athletes and spectators alike. We have been and will continue to collaborate with other agencies such as LA Metro, Westside Cities Cog, and SCAC on regional transportation initiatives and studies related both to the Olympics and regional mobility as a whole. Next slide, please. So in fiscal year '25, the Transportation Department will continue to coordinate and collaboratively support the joint initiatives of Planning and Development, Public Works, and the Transportation Department as outlined in the adopted Shore Range Mobility Plan. In addition to the Move Culver City project, we have been collaborating with Public Works Mobility and Traffic Engineering Division with the Complete Street Design Guidelines effort and the Conceptual Design and Public Outreach Efforts on several bicycle and pedestrian projects, including the Overland Playa pedestrian and bike improvements, Fox Hills Neighborhood Traffic Management Program and Bike Way Project, as well as bike lanes on Culver Boulevard and Robertson Boulevard. Next slide, please. The Transportation Department remains committed to safeguarding its long-term financial stability to effectively deliver essential services to both the city and the community. In anticipation of the city's growth, the department is actively addressing the escalating demands for services. A key undertaking involves the development of a robust strategic grant funding plan designed to provide recommendations and actionable steps. And this plan aims to strategically position the agency for optimal financial health, securing vital grant funds for critical areas such as capital, infrastructure, and service needs in alignment with the projected service levels outlined in the forthcoming Comprehensive Mobility Services Plan in the 2045 General Plan Mobility Element. Next slide. In fiscal year '25, the department will continue to lead the Move Culver City project in partnership with the Public Works and other departments. The purpose of the project is to create the mobility paradigm shift by developing an integrated multimodal transportation system, improve the infrastructure and services for the alternative modes, and offer the community equitable, convenient, and sustainable mobility options. We have been managing and monitoring the Downtown Corridor project, which includes bus and bike lanes connecting downtown with the E-line Culver City Station in Arts District, as well as with pedestrian improvements, bus stop improvements, and expanded transit and micromobility services. The project, in alignment with the efforts of the rest of the region, will expand the network of infrastructure and services for mobility alternatives, making these alternatives truly convenient for people's daily travel. The Downtown Corridor first went live in November 2021. And in fiscal year '25, we anticipate completing the construction of the Downtown Corridor redesign. Next slide, please. We have recently completed the RFP process and hired a consultant to support this Comprehensive Mobility Services Plan, or CMSP. The purpose of this project is to leverage mass transit and other alternative modes to address the midterm and long-term mobility needs, accommodate the growth of, and maintain the long-term vitality of the community. The CMSP will align with and integrate the city's 2045 general plan, the Shore Range Mobility Plan, the Transportation Demand Management Plan, and the Bike and Pedestrian Action Plan to establish a roadmap with a complete package of recommended mobility services and benchmarks to serve the mobility needs of the community leading up to the Olympics and extending to the 2045 horizon. We will conduct a thorough analysis of our existing services and plans, assess travel demands and patterns in the city and the surrounding service area, evaluate city and regional connections and growth, establish ridership profiles and ridership forecasts, and recommend mobility service improvements that respond to the community's needs. Next slide, please. Transportation Demand Management, or TDM, is essential for our city to balance the growth from new and infill developments with existing and new users' mobility needs. We're excited that Culver City has attracted many great new employers and continues to do so. But our constrained infrastructure and sustainability objectives do not support all employees arriving by single occupancy vehicles. Providing context-specific mobility management strategies that make alternative greener modes attractive to our community will enable both people who live and work in the city to leverage more convenient travel modes and ease traffic congestion. In the next fiscal year, the department will continue to lead the implementation in partnership with the Planning and Development and Public Works Department. And this effort will include creating a new TDM program to foster mobility mode shifts and innovative mobility management strategies to help achieve the city's mobility goals of improving circulation and addressing traffic congestion. The project will also recommend a practical and comprehensive TDM plan, update relevant city policies, and provide a roadmap for implementing other TDM-related recommendations. Next slide, please. Also, on the topic of sustainability, as our transit fleet continues to age, we are seeking even greener solutions to fleet replacement. The department will continue to work on and establish a transit zero emission master plan that will recommend strategies and outline the steps for converting the transit fleet to zero emission vehicles, as well as making the facility ready for the zero emission. And we will be piloting a hydrogen electric bus project and implementing the facility expansion improvements. Next slide, please. Beyond transit vehicles, the Transportation Department will continue to work on the electrification of the rest of the city's vehicle fleet and complete the city fleet and facility electrification assessment and implementation plan that will outline the necessary steps to ensure that the electrification of the city's fleet is achieved in the most financially and operationally efficient ways possible. This is a living document, given that the constant innovation and changes in technologies with regard to green energy. We're also supporting Public Works and value their leadership on the public charging infrastructure, as well as collaborating with other city departments who have fleet vehicles. Next slide, please. The department will explore and work to identify funding for a new Jefferson Circulator service that will turn the Jefferson Boulevard corridor into a high-quality transit corridor to support city's growth and sustainability and mobility goals. Transportation Department was successful in securing a competitive grant for the startup capital costs. And we are working with the city manager's office and the Economic Development Department to secure the operation and maintenance costs for this service. The department will also partner with LA Metro to implement a microtransit pilot service to evaluate and recommend how this new mobility service may integrate with and refine the menu of mobility services provided by the city. Next slide. As previously mentioned, we currently operate three circulator routes in Culver City. The Downtown Circulator 1C1, traveling along Washington Boulevard and connecting from the senior center, the Vets Auditorium on Culver and Overland to the Arts District. This service was temporarily offered for rights-free of charge. In last month, we brought back fares along this route. We also have two school circulators, 5C1 and 5C2, connecting residential communities to Culver City Middle and High Schools in downtown Culver City. Over 150 students use our school circulators as a mean to get to school each day. The Transportation Department will continue to monitor, improve, and evaluate these routes to better serve the ridership needs of the community. And in the next fiscal year, we look to enhance the customer experience on 1C1 by relaunching service with new vehicles to improve the experience of our riders. Next slide. We will continue to administer city's micromobility program and expand the program by implementing the metro bike share into Culver City. Our micromobility program includes private dockless scooter share and bike share, which is currently provided by Bird. In fiscal year '25, we look to implement metro bike share, and this will enable riders to take trips both within city limits and locally, connecting Culver City to adjacent metro bike share service areas such as Palms, Mar Vista, Del Rey, and West Los Angeles. Next slide. The Transit Ambassador Program intends to establish a pilot initiative aimed at enhancing overall customer experience within Culver City's transit system. The program involves deploying trained contract personnel, including mobile and fixed post personnel strategically across buses, bus stops, transit centers, and major points of connection. The Transit Ambassadors, with a rider-facing and welcoming role, will actively engage with the community, offer information and resources, provide multilingual support, promote the sense of safety, and assist vulnerable riders. Next slide, please. Vehicles improperly parked at bus stops or driving in dedicated bus or bike lanes negatively impact transit operations by increasing travel time and can create safety concerns for cyclists. However, enforcement requires substantial labor from the police department. By using strategically-placed cameras on buses, we can augment enforcement activities in these dedicated areas. We have recently completed a 90-day proof-of-concept pilot on video surveillance enforcement to collect the data. The results of the analysis show that the video enforcement is an effective tool for enforcing parking violations at the bus stops and in the mobility lanes. We're collaborating with the police department and city attorney's office to leverage this technology to enhance parking regulation enforcement and improve transit safety and customer experience. Next slide. The EV motor pool pilot project will replace the fleet of aging city hall pool cars with electric and plug-in hybrid electric vehicles and introduce a software-based centralized management system for the city's pool of shared vehicles. This will provide a portal for staff to more efficiently reserve vehicles with automated confirmation. Next slide. In fiscal year '25, we will continue to collaborate with our IT department and other departments to implement various strategies to improve the department's daily operations and enhance the overall customer experience. The key projects include the pre-development activities on the Culver City Transit Center technology and security improvements, the dial-or-ride digitalization, and clever insights technology with robust analytical tool. Next slide. So this concludes my presentation. The department is excited to embark on several critical initiatives to improve mobility and transportation equity in our city in both the near and long term. Thank you for the opportunity to present our work plan, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on this particular item, City Clerk? Thank you. Councilmember VR.
Ms. Chang, thank you very much, and congrats on the 96 years. I'm glad to see that the bus rodeo is still going on. I know it's been going on for as long as I can remember, and it's always been such a huge part of the community. When is the finals or where is that going to be held at?
The regional rodeo is going to be held at Hesperia, and it's this Saturday.
You'll keep us posted as terms of who won and whatnot?
Will do.
All right, I appreciate it. I know each department is struggling with hiring and retention, more importantly. You know, we can hire, but we have struggles retaining. And I think this department is struggling as well with retention. Any ideas why or what your thoughts on that are?
There is a combination of factors associated with it, depending on what position we're talking about here. I think that some of the issue has to do with some of the other agencies maybe offering higher-paying positions. And then some of it has to do with the vacancies that we have currently, which place the additional burden to existing staff or to make sure that our core operation continue to move forward. So there are multiple reasons.
All right. Yeah, I know, especially in this field, as well as all the fields, it's about being competitive. And unfortunately, if we're not competitive, we can attract good-quality employees. But it's hard to keep them if somebody's dangling a bigger carrot in front of their eyes. And then, you know, I think retention and overall wellness or maybe the morale of the department is if we really recruit and promote from within the organization, are we currently doing that? I know whenever possible, are we practicing or making the habit of doing that within this department?
We are. Well, you know, first of all, I was, I used to be the mobility planning manager, and now I'm the CTO. And most recently, we have promoted Nestor Ducrux, who was our management analyst under fleet, and he has worked under the operations as well. He has a total experience, I believe, is eight years. And we promoted him to the position of Transit Operations Manager. So yes, whenever we can, we always try to promote from within.
Okay, yeah, I think that's another really, I think, important piece of the puzzle because, you know, we have good-quality employees and they don't feel that their work is being appreciated or deserved. appreciated or deserved. We might lose them if we don't actively promote and retain them within the organization. In terms of ridership, is, what is our overall ridership now compared to what it was last year, or even the year before?
So right now, overall ridership is about 63% of the pre-pandemic level. It has increased from before, however, it's slowly increasing. And so, and right now, we're also at about 84%, 85% in terms of service level compared to pre-pandemic. And so, we're really trying very hard to get back to the 100% service level, which is very important, to make sure that we are providing frequent services to our riders and so that we can increase the ridership. So we're working hard toward that goal.
Okay. And then, if you could identify, like, some of the three largest challenges that your department or you are facing currently, then the organization, what would those be?
Number one would be staffing, having enough staff to do all the work that we have. In fact, it's been a challenge in narrowing down the number of initiatives that we have, and we have about 46 of those, which we were only, I was able to only narrow it down to 15 top priorities. And so, number one definitely will be staffing, so we can get the work done. Number two would be funding, and that funding is essential as we look at planning for the future. Now, we have needs, and we already have needs in terms of facility, in terms of staffing, vehicles, and we need to get the funding that's necessary for us to maintain existing level of service, as well as increase the level of service that we know is needed for now in the leading up to the Olympics, as well as to accommodate the demands that's brought about by the projected increase in densities for jobs, as well as population, as described in the general plan update. So that's number two.
Three, okay.
Yeah.
Then, you know, you spoke on de-electrification, the electric buses. My understanding that it's, so far, we've invested quite a bit of money in there, and we haven't really, it's not quite what we were expecting. I think because of technology and just because of the overall, yeah, I think technology and the equipment or infrastructure, have we seen any improvement in some of the vehicles coming out, or where do we stand on the infrastructure side of that? And overall, electric buses, are they providing, are they proving to be what they were sort of written up to be, like?
The short answer is no. We've done a pilot of four battery electric buses. Through this pilot, which we collected a lot of good data, we've discovered that no, what the technology nowadays is not sufficient for the service that we need to provide and the range that we require for each bus every day. And so, as a part of that, we went back and reassessed the technology, the fueling technology. And right now, as part of the overall consideration, which will go into the zero emission master plan, we're also considering the hydrogen electric buses and vehicles. And so, our, one of our next steps is actually to search for funding, secure the funding, so that we can pilot the hydrogen buses first, before we determine ultimately what kind of property we are in terms of the fleet makeup on the fuel type.
All right, I'm glad to hear that. Yeah, I've been reading a lot in terms of the electric buses, and they're just not providing, I think, the service, more importantly, the range, that we all, plus the weight of those buses are, I hear, a whole lot more than our regular buses. And you touched on the ambassador program, but what, I mean, just briefly again, what is that, bus ambassador programs, or how is that going to be implemented?
So, the ambassador program essentially is a program where we hire contracted personnel to serve as essentially customer service representatives, roaming our system and providing information to our customers and the resources that they need. And the main purpose of that is to provide more customer support, as well as to show a presence in our system, in addition to the transit operators who need to focus on operating the buses. So, and we have recently just released the RFP for this service, and we're looking, planning on having the contract executed by the end of fiscal year, and then implementing the program starting the fiscal year '25.
Okay. And then, you also about collaboration, I'm glad to see that we're actively doing that, especially, you know, with everything that's coming online with the Olympics and soccer and whatnot. You know, our bus system is only good as the area that it's connected to, and if we're not, you know, talking with and collaborating with our neighboring cities, it's not going to be very effective whatsoever. That being said, you know, I think in order to increase ridership, people want someplace that they feel safe on, that they can depend and rely on it, and again, from point A to point B, and it's accessible. I think, you know, those are some of the issues that I hear with our system, our overall transportation. I think really to get folks off the street and out of their cars, I think rapid transit, I think bus system is the ideal way. Bikes work within the city, and that's great, to incorporate them where we can, but I think overall, if we focus on our bus system and how we can connect that to other cities regionally, I think it would be a much more cohesive, connected system. So I'm glad that we're collaborating and looking, looking at those issues. And you said we're 33 square miles?
That's correct.
Large area.
It is. And if I may add to your point here, in regard to Olympics, it's actually a pivoting moment within this L.A. region because of these events, that the whole region is gearing up toward improving the public transportation in other sustainability mode, and working toward bringing a lot of funding into this region to do so. And this is on both the infrastructure as well as the services. So this is the opportunity for us to get the public transportation system to the world-class system that this region needs. And so, we're, it's very exciting to be a part of that.
Absolutely. All right. Ms. Chang, again, thank you and all of your staff members and all your operators and everybody. I mean, there's so many different aspects to your department, but thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It was detailed and informative, and very appreciated of that. First, I have a question. In one of your priorities, you have the Jefferson Circulator, and I think if I read correctly, you had $38 million down there for 10 years, and it said, oh, and, so what is that covering? Basically, everything?
Yes, it essentially pays for all the cost of labor, as with the cost of the maintenance, so that the service can be operational for 10 years.
The equipment also, the buses?
Equipment, yeah. So we've actually, were able to get a competitive grant that will pay for the bus costs, as well as some improvements at the bus stops along the corridor. So right now, what's lacking is the operational funding.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks for explaining that. Well, you know, we have, we have seen challenges for all these new mobility solutions that have been piloted and tested and implemented and so on, and I think, you know, the department has been spread rather thin over the last few years, running in a lot of different directions at the same time as vacancy has piled up. So in my mind, you know, our buses and our circulators and our dialer ride, that's really the core for your department. And with regards to mobility options, they cover a lot of area for us. And I also have said many times that I think that the buses and our smaller ones, circulator and dialer ride, is the only thing that will make a dent in any kind of commuting going forward. It's the only thing that can deliver volume. The challenge is, of course, moving people from the car to the bus. And that will require a lot of work to have the buses, you know, go more frequent, feel safe, and go on time, and all those issues. And that's where I think that, in my mind, I would really encourage the department to refocus back to those core issues and get us really working our bus lines or circulators and dialer ride. And when we have that working, when we really have that done, and we have seen that we are up to 120% of ridership compared to 2019, and we're doing 100% of our service level, that's when we then can start looking at the other aspects, because now we have the backbone that will support these other aspects. I don't think it's the other way around. I don't think that by putting in metro bike, it will not really increase ridership for us, right? I would rather spend that $1.5 million on getting circulator and the dialer ride really up and running. I think that would be a much better use of money, because we have rather limited amount of real estate that is public right of way. And we all know that the only thing that can move a number of people is buses. Nothing else will move numbers. It all will just be just on the fringe. So I, my recommendation is to look at the aspect, and, you know, we have had this discussion for many years now. We're trying different micro-mobility scooters, bikes, e-bikes, and we're trying, you know, we have Uber and Lyft, we have all those things, right? And nothing has really made any dent on traffic. And at the same time, our ridership is not coming back. For me, that spells problems, and I really, really would support and encourage us to go back and really now focus on our bus lines and on our circulator, you know, the 1C1 and the 5C1 and 5C2. Fantastic, we have 150 schoolkids riding those 5C lines every day. What a success. Let's see if we can get the similar volumes up on our circulator and our major buses that we have in our city, right? I think that's so important, and that's why I'm so happy to see that you have this suggestion for the ambassador program, because, you know, we have to be honest, and that is that a lot of people refuses to go on Metro's buses, our buses, the light rail, because they don't feel safe. And if that's just how they perceive things, or if it's real, it doesn't really matter, because that's their argument for not riding, period. So these ambassadors will have a really important function. And with that, and also really focusing on our bus lines, maybe we can get ridership back and get back in business. I really would support this, and I think that, since this is my last time with the budget, and you know I've been talking about buses since I got on the council, actually before I got on council, there was really not much of discussions about the bus system, right? So I introduced a lot of ideas and thoughts about it, and I really think we need to refocus. Like with any organization, you know, you expand and you run in a lot of direction, and you test things and so on, but when, you know, when it gets, gets really, air gets really thin out there, right? So, and so you need to then come back and really look at your core business. So I'm happy to see the ambassadors. I'm happy to see that, you know, for the mobility planning and mobility initiatives that we really focus on our buses there. And then, you know, you're going to do the evaluation of our schedule and so on, so go for it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fuzen.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for your team and all the work that they're doing. Your department is doing a lot of work, and you're balancing a lot of competing interests. So appreciate your sensitivity to all that and your professionalism. For the Transit Ambassador Program, so you mentioned that they'll be doing, like, public safety, but will they providing, will they be providing security in a sense, or?
No, they will not. So they're, as I mentioned earlier, they're more like customer information representatives, and so by the fact that they're roaming around in our system and wearing our uniform that we will create for them to wear, it makes people feel like there's a sense of representation within our system. If they need help, they need more information, they will be able to find somebody. So essentially, even though they're not going to be performing the security function, though, just like our operators and our transit operations supervisor, if our employees are out there and they see something that's suspicious, or that's something that they will have to report to our transit operations supervisors, and then the operations supervisor will then respond accordingly, but they're not security details.
Councilmember, I think I just read a few hours ago, there was a Metro bus that was commandeered, that crashed into the Ritz Carlton. So it's, this is an issue on our buses. I think we have to be honest.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Appreciate that. Can you share more about the micro-transit, the pilot service with L.A. Metro? Is that going to help with the first and last mile?
Yes, the intent of that is to help with the first last mile, and the first pilot area that we identify is actually going to be in the downtown Culver City and Hayden Track area, which is an area that has, doesn't really have a lot of transit service. And in the past, when we tried to put more transit service there, it was not successful. And so, this is a way for us to try to serve that area and use that, and see how the use case of this, accommodating the employees who go to and from the Hayden Track, will be able to be benefited by this new service, and how this new service can be something that can be potentially integrated into our overall system. Now, I want to set the expectation that this is a very expensive service. Essentially, you're looking at Uber pool type of service for the public. And so, this is a pilot, and once we implement the pilot project, and if it's a success...
Supportive of the micro-transit pilot service. With HLA passing and CD5, you know, doing different things with their mobility infrastructure, do you think we're complementing all that? What CD5 has already done and what might be coming down the pipeline with HLA?
Well, I think this will, it will complement, what we do and what they do will complement each other, that's for sure. And not necessarily for, because of HLA, but just overall, because of the Olympics events, that jurisdictions are looking at building more and more, including L.A., building more bus lengths. And so, what we do in move Culver City will definitely complement, and what they do definitely will complement what we do as well.
Great.
So it's about completing that network of transportation infrastructure so that we can leverage the mass transit, as Councilmember Erickson mentioned, so that we can move people efficiently.
Great. So excellent. With the circulator, is, would it ever go to West LA College? I know that's not in Culver City technically.
So the Jefferson circulator that we had planned actually does include the West LA College.
Great, excellent.
It's a major destination, so.
Yay. Great. And then, I know we talked offline, but I have some questions about the Olympics, but we'll, I'll set up a time with you. Those are all my questions. Really excited for all the work plans and the direction that your department's going in. Appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Chang. Really detailed report, and the breadth of work that you're all doing is pretty incredible. But I just took notice you saying 96 years of our bus service, 100 years will be the Olympic. Olympic year, right? I think my math is right. So if that's correct, there's a little marketing opportunity there.
For sure. I'm sure Dia will be jumping on it.
Yeah. So that's exciting. Following up on question that I asked Ms. Williams about Wi-Fi on the buses, is that, I didn't see it in your work plan here at all. What's the potential for that?
This is one of the item that we have to deprioritize because we don't have enough staff resource to implement it. But when we do, and it's not going to be in fiscal year '25, for future year, we will definitely prioritize that.
Yeah, I think from the standpoint of incentivizing ridership, if people are taking public transportation, they're probably working on the bus and, you know, on the trains and being able to access the internet. And definitely an equity issue for folks that are riding that. It would be great to make that a future focus. With the Metro Bike Share, do, have we selected locations of where the parking stations would be?
We have preliminary location. That's internally, we've been looking at it just in anticipation of Metro's Bike Share Program being ready, which is not quite there yet. But when they're ready, then that's when we're going to formally start looking at those locations, working with Public Works and to get them implemented.
Okay, great. Thank you. And back to the circulator, I see in the work plan, there's exploring Fox Hills. How, how close to reality is that exploration?
This is regarding the.
Having, I think I read in here that you're exploring the circulator in the Fox Hills area. Did I not read that?
The circulator is for Jefferson Corridor.
Okay. I'm going to have to circle back.
Sure.
When the mayor's talking, maybe I'll find it. the enforcement, so we're working with the city attorney on figuring out how to enforce the camera capturing of violators in the bus lanes?
Correct, as well as PD.
Okay. And then that would come to council to vote to actually implement that in the future?
That's correct.
Okay. Looking forward to that. Has there been, and maybe this is a question for Public Works, which I would follow up later, but a study or are we monitoring whether there's been an increase of traffic on Lucerne, Braddock, through the residential streets over the past couple of years? We've been inundated with emails with folks that are frustrated with that.
There has been some, I think, preliminary look, and I'm kind of looking at my planner over there, in, during the Move Culver City final evaluation period. But this is definitely something that we will have to work with Public Works in examining the traffic on those streets.
I think that's a, something we should consider, knowing the side effects of what we're doing downtown and whether, you know, those cars are staying in the garages and people are taking the bus, or if they're actually just driving through our neighborhoods instead of through Culver Boulevard in Washington.
And we can certainly take a look at it. And there's a plan for us when we, after we finished constructing the downtown revised design, that we will also take a look at and monitor, collect and monitor the data and analyze them as well.
Great, thank you. And then finally, my last point is, so, you know, Councilmember Erickson was talking about the importance, and so do you, of our, of our mass transit, the buses and increasing that ridership. Is there, do we have a transportation incentive programs for our larger corporations? And is that, would that go through your department?
Yes, actually, it would be, there's a regional program through Metro.
Okay.
It used to be called BTAP, but I'm not sure what it's called right now. Dia, do you know? It is still BTAP employer? So there is a region why there is an employer incentive program.
Okay, I'm just, I'm pretty sure, I know at least one of the two, Apple and Amazon, have their own shuttle service that they, maybe both of them, they transport their employees to either satellite campus locations within the city or to restaurants during lunchtime. We want to increase ridership. If we had park and ride near the freeways where, you know, I know pre-pandemic, we were talking about 10,000 employees downtown between Apple and Amazon that weren't there before. If a lot of those folks could park their cars at Washington and Penn and/or at Westfield, if they're coming from the South Bay, and take a shuttle, I mean, to their jobs in downtown Culver City or in other places within the city, I would imagine that would have an incredible impact on our, you know, on our transit, our public transit participation and also on our traffic issues.
Well, this is definitely something that we can evaluate, analyze in our upcoming comprehensive mobility services plan.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to communicate with them about something like that. I think that's it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Incredibly detailed and deeply appreciate the work of your team, particularly, I frequently see your team at outreach events, and I think it's really important to have that connectivity with school district and other, at other community events. So very grateful for your, your team's presence there. I'd just like to do another plug for potentially increasing the opportunity for more free fare days. I think we just do four. I think we approved that not too long ago. But fare free days could be an opportunity to introduce low barrier, introducing our system to folks who might not necessarily know about it or, you know, be interested in trying. So just another plug for more investment in those. I know that the team is trying to do everything that we can to make our services more efficient, sustainable and attractive. So I appreciate that intention and priority amongst you and your team. Was very happy to see the investment or the attempt to move into some of the Metro Bike and these programs because of, as we know, from data and studies, the first last mile is really an issue. And we're trying to make sure that the city remains connected. So I appreciate the lens of connectivity to that. I had a question as it pertains to sort of our, how the department utilizes some of the plans that are related to the work that you all are doing or in the planning, sort of the, whether it's the Bike and Pedestrian Action Plan or the TOD studies that have been done in the past, or just how does that factor into the work as you continue to move forward and add, develop the priorities?
So Transportation Department always look at most mobility from a holistic perspective. And as a part of that, even though we provide transit services, we are looking at different ways where we can improve it. And one way of making sure that we're making the correct analysis and the right recommendation is really looking at all the available plans that are out there, right? So if we're talking about Bike and Pedestrian Action Plan, it's looking at the network of the, for the cyclists and whether there are proper infrastructure for the pedestrians, which are all part of the first last mile. That is important in feeding into the mass transit. And so those will need to be taken into consideration as well as the services that are needed. I think ultimately, what we want to create is a, is a menu of options. And those menu, that menu of option will contain multiple modes, including driving, you know, riding a bike, taking the transit, or potentially, you know, it's, the intent is for our community to not have to rely on cars and so that they would be, you know, able to not have to own a car. But if they need access to a car, maybe a service that we can provide would be a universal car share service where it's available in the community and people can take it when they need to. But going back to your original question, which is how do those plans align? You know, general plan update, for example, has projected for a lot of job density increase as well as population increase. And then the land use element depicts where those are development enhancement or the increase in density will be targeted, right? So those plans are important for us to take into consideration as we plan for the future in terms of mobility services and where they should be, what route we should be putting more investments on. And, you know, all of these will come together to allow us to understand, you know, what other investment we will need to put on multiple aspects of providing that mobility services. I hope that answered your question.
It does. I just wanted to make sure it was something that y'all were keeping in mind, and I'm grateful for you taking the time to elaborate on that and reaffirm the intention and the planning that's going in. So thank you for that. How is the, I deeply appreciate the sort of overall investment of the city in trying to do more with community education. It's always something that I've been trying to lift up, particularly as it pertains to your department. There will be, or there is an existing need for a lot of community education in terms of the why and maybe some of these plans. I know that the comprehensive mobility services plans continues. It was on the plan last year. It continues this year, and I'm grateful to see that. What's the strategy in reaching out to neighbors who maybe don't have a direct entry point here? They might be fearful of moving away from having cars as a primary mode of transportation as it, as it is kind of, you know, everywhere because that's how our communities have been designed. How, what is the strategy for the department to kind of interface with our neighbors and provide that education and walk them to these plans that we have that are for all of us?
One of the biggest component of the CMSP is actually on the storytelling. And it's an effort in public outreach. And we actually have a component just on community long-term education. And so this is a way for us to come up with information that is easy for our community to understand and what we're trying to get to in terms of mobility and what that means in terms of people's quality of life and their, their daily lives and what it would look like. I think one of the things that we discovered in the last several years of implementing different mobility projects is that, you know, we may think that we, you know, we have an understanding of where we're heading to. And that's why all the different mobility initiatives are about, is getting us to that ultimate mobility vision. But we haven't really done a good job in communicating that to the community. And so it's hard for them to understand and fathom. There is a, there's a, in the, for lack of description, there's a method to the madness. You know, the things that we're doing, when they see it, they only see now and they see the impacts, but they don't see what it could be in the future. And so that storytelling piece is something that we're going to be focusing on in the CMSP. And then as a way for us to reach out to the community and express what that future of mobility we're heading toward, we're striving for. And then, you know, insert and address their concerns about or fear about, you know, what's happening to their quality of life. So that's definitely an important component.
Thank you so much for naming that. And I'm very happy to hear that it is essential and that work that you're doing and your team is doing moving forward. And I hope that it is effective because it really will take us making sure that our neighbors are being brought along as well. How, well, I guess just to, just to elevate, you know, climate is a huge piece, at least for me, climate, the climate crisis and the climate concerns. And I know it's, you know, integrated in the emissions goals and, you know, just everything that your department is really doing. So just hopefully weaving in that importance and the urgency of us acting on the local level, I think would be really critical, hopefully, into ensuring effectiveness of, you know, bringing neighbors along, hopefully. So the last piece, because you were incredibly detailed and I'm in alignment with, you know, these emission goals and expanding micro mobility and I love how your department is always having a keen eye towards grants and really appreciate your laser focus on that because it's so critical for the sustainability of the work. So grateful for that. I just wanted to see what were you all benchmarking the ambassador program after? Are you looking at Metro's example? Are you looking at some of the other examples in the county? I'm very happy to see it. I think that, you know, it's, I've always seen safety as more than one tool. A lot of times it's people, it's light, it's, you know, street design could also have a lot to do with safety. But many times it's just, LA did a study not too long ago, and it was the presence of a street vendor on a street. It led to less incidents happening at night, right? So we don't always think of these things as safety metrics. So I'm excited to see that it is outlined. But I'm just curious to see where you're pulling from to sort of map out how this engagement will go. But I'm really excited to see it.
So we're definitely learning from other transit agencies, including Metro. And we're actually also have been communicating with Big Blue Bus in regard to, they recently pushed out their ambassador program as well. So we're learning from each other. And benchmark is something that we will formulate as part of that project process after we hired a contractor to help us with it.
Wonderful. Vice Mayor, did you have anything else?
I did find that point, it does not say Fox Hills. It says, under the City Ride Micro Transit Service, staff will explore implementing a second pilot in the Westfield-Culver City, Culver Point area. Kind of Fox Hills. So I hope that that community has the opportunity to test the program if it's possible. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to try to clarify something that we've been discussing here, and that's the Metro Bike Share. I want to make sure I understand. I think Diana was pointing out that the proposal would cost 1.2 million. Is that correct?
The implementation cost, let me go back to. Yeah, there's the cost of implementing, which is the capital cost, and then there is the operations and maintenance cost.
And would, this would all be new expenditure out of the general fund, would it not?
Correct. The existing CIP does contain about $465,000 for this.
I just wanted the council to be aware that this would be, this proposal to pursue this would be new funding out of the general fund. So I just wanted the council to make sure that you all understood that.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate again, you and your, your leadership and your department's intention to ensuring that we reach our community goals and ensuring the welfare and, you know, well-being and connectivity of our community. So I really appreciate your work and look forward to the next steps here in this process. So thank you so much.
Mayor, we do have a comment for transportation from Kareem Sally.
Okay, wonderful.
Honorable Mayor, council members, staff members, hello. You've done an incredible presentation, and if I could give you a hug without it being creepy, I will give it right away. You and your team have been doing an incredible job, and I want to congratulate you for the job you're doing and how steady you are and thorough and competent. and how steady you are and thorough and competent at your job and also extremely patient, not only with the council, but with the population as well. You are facing a car culture that is extremely hard to fight. This is the car town of the United States. And it's really hard to fight the fight you're doing. But be assured that the progressive in this town are working really hard to win the next election and give and bring all the wind we could be bringing into your sails so we can change the paradigm shift that you mentioned, the option of menu that she mentioned earlier. So listen to me. The cars will disappear or almost disappear in this town. It's hard to fathom today. Because when you look at Sepulveda Boulevard, La Cienega Boulevard, it's like, there's no way we can get rid of those cars. But we will. Our lives depends on it. Climate change is there. Remember the three atmospheric rivers we just got? And that's just the appetizer for what's coming next. You, it seems incredible to me that you don't realize the impact that the climate change has on our lives, on our culture, on agriculture, on every aspect of our life. And I'm really incredibly pleased by this department that is the one that is doing the most to keep us on track. I just want to set the record straight, Mr. Erickson. You are not the only one who put the buses on the budget, not at all. I know one person in my life, and I live with her, that she was really adamant about it. I don't know what, if you forgot your pills or if you just want to lie, but it is not okay to pretend that you are the only one taking care of buses, what you just want only and only voting to put cars on the street. I'm really outraged by this lie. Thank you so much.
Well, Kareem, you can go and sit down.
I don't know. Maybe we can keep the budget meeting going.
And I just want to make a comment.
Is it about the budget?
He made some statements. And I just want to say that when I come on council, it was basically, mobility was bikes and walking. And I introduced the whole idea that maybe we should include our discussion about buses about there also.
That's here now from the city manager. Thanks so much.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Mike Bruckner, Assistant City Manager. My colleagues and I are pleased to present to you the fiscal year 2025 City Manager's Work Plan. I'm joined here today, obviously, by our City Manager, John Nuckbar, Assistant City Manager, Jesse Mays, Assistant to the City Manager, Shelley Wolfberg, Assistant to the City Manager, Aramis White Shirin, and Communications and Public Information Manager, Dustin Kleeman. And with us in spirit is our Administrative Clerk, Terrica Miller. And additionally, you will also be hearing from City Clerk Jeremy Bocino and Economic Development Director Elaine Warner, who will be sharing their work plans for their respective divisions. Next slide, please. Under the leadership of our City Manager, Mr. Nuckbar, the City Manager's Office is responsible for the day-to-day administration of the municipal corporation, overseeing operations to ensure alignment with City Council goals, objectives, and policy direction. The office sits at the nexus of policy and operations, working cooperatively and collaboratively with elected officials, outside agencies, and community groups in addition to all city departments. The office also includes several key functions, including the City Clerk's Office, Economic Development, and Cultural Affairs. Further, the office coordinates public information and citizen engagement to promote transparency and accountability and to ensure that the community is well-informed about public policy and related service objectives adopted by the City Council and implemented by city departments. Much of our time and focus in the City Manager's Office is spent on advocating for favorable legislative outcomes or problem-solving important community or organizational issues through special interdepartmental projects, many of which you've heard already yesterday and today, that enhance internal and external service delivery. Next slide, please. Stated by Director Barnes last evening, the City Manager's Office, along with the Housing and Human Services Department, coordinates the city's efforts to address our unhoused communities' needs through the effective operation of homeless services and resources. Assistant to the City Manager, Aramis White Shirin, leads the city's weekly care and service day outreach efforts, along with ensuring that the City Manager's Office is actively engaged in all related policy and program activities. Most recently, the city partnered with Healthcare in Action to launch street-based healthcare services. And throughout fiscal year 2025, we will monitor the efficacy of this new program. Additionally, the office is leading an effort to develop a comprehensive performance measurement system to ensure that homeless service program inputs, outputs, and outcomes accomplish our intended results. After the successful launch of several groundbreaking initiatives like the Wellness Village, Motel Master Leasing, and Project Home Key programs, the City Manager's Office will work to identify alternative funding solutions and strategies to relieve the significant fiscal stress on the city's general fund for homeless services. Next slide. Also, as shared last night, the city's mobile crisis team was officially launched last month. And the office will continue to monitor the effectiveness of the mobile crisis team throughout fiscal year 2025 with a particular emphasis on the successful resolution of cases and rates of law enforcement diversion to the mobile crisis team. Next slide, please. In fiscal year 2025, the City Manager's Office will continue to work with the Finance Department to facilitate citywide improvements, as identified in the Moss Adams Report, in addition to internal process and procedure improvements to enhance service delivery efficiency and effectiveness. This includes related efforts to the dissolution of the Committee on Permits and Licenses, enhanced reporting of development projects, cash handling, and other areas of advancement. This concludes my remarks. And I would now like to turn the present over to Assistant City Manager, Jesse Mays.
As you heard from our CIO, Michelle Williams, we've been making a lot of progress with our fiber network. The City Manager's Office works very collaboratively with Michelle and her team, especially on the business plan aspects related to the network. And I just, I forget if Michelle mentioned this or not, but the net, one of the other impacts we've seen from the network is just the ability of the city to quickly stand up different network infrastructure projects. For instance, at the Safe Sleep Village, we were really able to quickly implement cameras and Wi-Fi there because we had the fiber connection nearby. So there's, we keep on encountering new and sort of delightful benefits of having this fiber network. Next slide. The next two slides will look familiar to you. They are projects that have consistently been moved to the back burner over the past couple of years due to other pressing priorities. But we do remain optimistic about being able to tackle them in the coming year. And one is completing the three remaining oil franchise agreements with, for oil pipelines in the city that have been longstanding agreements the city has. Next slide. The next is short-term rentals. We are collecting TOT tax from Airbnb, who's the biggest operator or provider of short-term rentals. And, you know, knock on wood, we haven't received many complaints, if any, recently, from residents. But it is something that we believe should be regulated at some point. I think, you know, we've seen LA take a second look recently at some of the regulations it put into place a few years ago. So I think it has been actually helpful to not be a sort of first mover in this space because we've seen different regulatory schemes not work out as intended and have to be revisited. So I think our patience is paying off. But that is something that we still hope to regulate at some point. Next slide. As you know, we purchased the Redding Gun Store property this past year. And this may be something that we actually get before City Council, before the new fiscal year. But we do want to initiate a community-involve process where we determine the future of the site. And that will start with staff coming to City Council and getting your input on the process. And again, that may happen before this summer. Most likely, it'll happen this spring. Shelley?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I will be very brief. I continue to work with the City Council Policies Ad Hoc Subcommittee along with the City Clerk and City Attorney's Office to complete a comprehensive review of all of our council policies and to finalize the new policy manual for the City Council. I'm also working with other departments on other practices, such as dissolution of the community permits and licenses, FAA, LAX, and other administrative policies related to email, for example. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you all for your collaborative efforts and your hard work. And I enjoy working with you all and looking forward to the future. Thanks.
Hello, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. I'm Dustin Kleeman. First time I get to speak with you, so I'm a little nervous here. I'm the Communications and Public Information Manager. I'm grateful to be here, working for the city of Culver City and the community we serve. My goal since the very beginning has been to inform the public, provide storytelling of the efforts of the city, highlight the people making that happen. And we've seen tremendous growth and opportunity in our ability to connect with our community. And I'd like to give you just a few stats, too, to show the work that we've been able to provide in the last six months of arriving here. We've created 24 YouTube videos, 28 social media reels, 44 articles and pages on our website, and 55 email blasts that I've created or have assisted in as my time here. So as you see, we continue to provide timely and transparent city news through our social media channels, email blasts, and news posts on the city's website. We also promote community engagement by alerting the public of events and opportunities for their participation and engagement. Our goal is to further develop e-newsletters. Currently, we have the City Council summaries, which are sent to you a few days after every City Council meeting. We'd like to increase that as a recapping monthly email that would highlight what has happened in the last month when it comes to the city and a logohead for residents and community members, again, alerting them to the events, meetings, and resources being made available. I'm grateful to also have the opportunity and ability to create more storytelling videos, an effort that we will continue to boost on our social media platforms, involving and coordinating with different departments, assisting in their needs by creating those opportunities to connect with the public. And as you heard earlier, too, that would include HR as well as finance. And we are talking about opportunities for them, too. So with that said, that concludes the City Manager's Office portion of the presentation. My colleagues and I are happy to answer any questions you may have. And if I also may take the opportunity to thank you for creating this position, I am very grateful to be here. Grateful to City Manager, John Nuckbar, as well as Assistant City Manager, Jesse Mays, for having me here.
Thank you. Do we have any comments, any quick?
We have no comments.
Council member.
No questions, just John, thank you so much for your leadership and your guidance. You know, you have truly shown to me how much you care about this city, love the city, and more importantly, you surround yourself by a staff that is equally as passionate about the betterment of Culver City. So thank you for all you do, and Jesse and staff. Dustin, not so much. We can. Dustin, thank you. And just meeting you, you know, in such a short time ago, you've done, you've been so impactful in really getting the message of what Culver City is all about and what we're doing. So I really appreciate your work. And Shelley as well, you guys just an awesome job. I don't have any really questions. Well, John, you got your hands full coming, moving forward. So we'll talk in April about the budget, or, I mean, rather, May. So until then, thank you guys again. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Council member.
Thank you. And thank you, and it's good to see all of you here. I have a few questions. The first one is relating to your first work plan priority there. And it's really more a question about the street-based healthcare. And I wonder if you see, over time, that there could be any changes in need as we move more and more of our people out on the streets into all our facilities? And with the last count, the official indicators are that we more or less have as many beds as we had people on the street. We have homeless people in other type of situations. But I'm just wondering, do you, in your coordination with Housing and Human Services, if you look at contracting there, if there might be a lesser need in half a year, a year, or something? Or it's too early to say?
It's very early, but we will be monitoring that closely. And hopefully, it won't be a long-term need, but we will be monitoring it.
Okay, yeah, thank you. We might need them at our facilities longer times and more instead, right? For being out on the street. So the next question, can we connect? And it's, now it's sort of, it doesn't cost us any money. I guess it generates money. Another question is, do you see that it generates money so we can start utilize the extra revenue to act fill general fund or other aspects?
Well, we still have a liability on the books for the initial capital investment.
The loan from general fund, right?
Yeah, so that, we still have that liability. The other thing that we, you know, we're trying to assess is that we could really, we think we could significantly increase the growth of the onward portion if we were able to increase our investment in laterals. The big challenge with expanding that business is the cost of construction of laterals. And we're exploring the possi, we're in the midst of trying to analyze, is there any way we could, you know, maybe create our own crew if we could determine that it would pay for itself? So we're in, we're still, it's still early in this whole effort. And we're continuing to evaluate it and try to think of new ways to improve the service. I don't, I don't think we're at a point where it's, it still needs to pay back its capital investment. So, but we'll, we'll keep you informed.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm happy to see the short-term rental comes back. I sort of remember I was on the first subcommittee. No, I think we had this enormously big committee where we started, and that didn't work. And then we had a subcommittee. And so I just want to put something in there, and that is, I think it's important to have this done a year before FIFA. Because, you know, people start making reservations and stuff way ahead of those big type of events. And FIFA is '26, so that means we have about a year. Because if we then change regulations and there is already, you know, so, yeah. My recommendation is to have it done one year before FIFA happens.
Thank you. And our newest Assistant City Manager apparently has experience regulating short-term rentals. So he can be very helpful, as well as one of our new Assistant City Attorneys, Deputy City Attorneys. So I think we have good members of the team who can help us out with this.
Okay, and then I'm going to follow up. Follow up on something from last year and then something from just earlier. And that is onboarding of new council members. Where I think that, you know, one thing is all the HR and all the formal stuff and all that. But I think there is also a value to have information available for new council members, you know, just phone list with all the important department head cell number. Because we all have them now. But, you know, it took a few months until you have collected them and so on. And I know that no one really has a problem. Council member have their cell number and can communicate, you know, things like that. And there is a lot of other stuff. We have done a lot of different reports and policy documents. And some of them are crucial because they actually control the city. And maybe new council members should get sort of a list of links or actually have a printed budget. printed budget of current budget, get that whole package so they get totally shocked when they start. You know, things like that. And for me, that's it with the City Manager. Streamlining it with the HR is a pretty, I don't know if Councilmember O'Brien has something more to add on that, since that is his thinking also.
Councilmember, you know, I think what I'll do is, I'll have my staff, I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll speak with each of you offline and try to, because each of you may have different thoughts about what would have been helpful for you when you started, and we'll try to gather that information. I think we'll try to put together a, some kind of a program that doesn't exist now. I hear you loud and clear, and I see the benefit. We will, we will work on it.
Thank you. That was, that was all my comments, questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thanks. I don't have any questions. Your work is pretty much integrated into everything that we do. Thanks for your leadership to the city. Thanks to Jesse and now Mike. Shelley, you are the absolute best. Dustin, you have filled this position very well and took off running, and thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Erickson asked most of my questions. I did want to follow, I noted this week that LA County has established some regulations regarding short-term rentals just this week. I believe only primary residents can be used, so it'd be interesting to monitor that and see where that goes for their unincorporated areas. And do we not receive tax, TOT from VRBO, or do we need to initiate that process? How does that work?
We don't from VRBO. No, but we do for, we have, we have an agreement with Airbnb. We do, but I think in order to get VRBO, we're going to have to have regulations in place, I believe.
The last time we reached out to them, we were rebuffed. I mean, they weren't interested in talking, and so, but I agree with the City Manager that once we have regulations in place, we'll have a stronger footing to approach them.
I know opportunity there, for sure. That might be another reason to expedite that. And we know that for FIFA, to a lesser extent, I don't know how many games LA is hosting for that, I think only a handful, but, but the Olympics, for sure, you know, I know I've talked with many of you about, I think is a great opportunity for us to solve some of our budget issues, our revenue issues during that year, is having a solid TOT program for that in particular. But that's it. John, Jesse, Shelley, Dustin, and Aramis, and now Mike, I really appreciate all of you. Communicate with you quite a bit, and you're always very professional and very kind and quick to respond, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and all of your work. How, I'm grateful that we have new staff. How are folks feeling about the staffing levels? Do you feel like it is appropriate? Do y'all expect to, you know, I'm just curious with the addition, how are things feeling with everything that is on the plate?
Mike has been a huge help.
Happy to hear that.
You know, Onyx was great and did a lot of work and was fantastic, but, you know, she wore a lot of hats with, you know, finance and, and just having Mike being able to be fully dedicated to this off, I think is super, super helpful, so glad to have him here, and Dustin, too.
So how, I know when a mobile crisis was here, there was a goal to do a bit of data collection on that. I just wanted to make sure, just wanted to elevate the importance of that as we continue this local emergency on homelessness. I know there must be some, I guess it's here in terms of developing, key performance measures, so I just wanted to, you know, really emphasize the importance of having some metrics so that we can kind of gauge how, how well things are going, making sure to collect data, staffing hours. I was happy to hear the number of folks placed into permanent housing as well. Of course, excited about Home Key, but just in general, it's good to share how, how well the programs and things have been going. So just wanted to plus one the importance of that work plan priority. In terms of the short-term rentals, I think I recall being on a subcommittee during the pandemic with Daniel Lee, our former mayor, I don't remember if he was mayor at the time. We did some recommendations. I don't know, it's been a long time, so I can't remember what was recommended, but, you know, of course, for a number of reasons, would like to see, primarily because of the impact on housing, right? We'd like to see that come back, so I've heard it from a couple of colleagues, so just looking forward to seeing what, what staff brings forth on that item. In terms of the policy, what is it, the reviews and policies from Moss Adams, is that, do y'all believe it will be done in, like, in this fiscal year coming up? Or is that something that might be extended beyond?
So the recommendations that were in the Moss Adams report are very expansive, and they cover a wide variety of topics, including enterprise resource planning, grants management, software improvements, cash handling, things of that nature. So there's one senior management analyst who is responsible for the internal audit function. He's currently in the Finance Department, and we will continue to work with them to sort of check the boxes on all of the issues that were, were identified in those reports, as well as other process improvements that, that we can reevaluate and try to squeeze out as much, you know, efficiency and effectiveness out of a wide variety of things. For example, one of the things that we mentioned was the dissolution of the Committees on Permits and Licenses. We'll be taking a look at those efforts, as well as providing reports on development projects and where things are in the pipeline and things of that nature. So all of that is baked into our efforts to really take a comprehensive look at opportunities for advancement on our, on our services and programs.
Okay, so probably a more longer term, probably won't be finished in this fiscal year.
I think it's one of those things where you're constantly taking a look at our processes and procedures, and I don't know that we're ever truly finished, because there's always opportunities to squeeze out more, more efficiency and effectiveness, but those reports at least highlight areas that we can get started on.
Absolutely. All right, sounds, sounds good. Thank you for providing more insight on that. Looking forward to those updates. I'm very grateful to see the commitment for an engagement process for the gun store. I know that community members are really excited about that, so I appreciate your leadership in that space. Excited to hear about the e-newsletter as well, just, you know, again, in the vein of engagement. Very grateful for that effort and that goal or priority. The only other feedback that I have, because I assume it would rest here, I noticed in some of the presentations, some of the departments had a stated mission or vision that sort of was stated at the outset of their presentation, not all departments, but some. I think it would be a good idea for, for every department to kind of ground their budget recommendations or work plan or priorities in whatever their particular mission or vision is for their department. I don't know if each department has a mission or vision, but if not, that could be a cool opportunity for folks to build that out. And as well, you know, I care deeply about grant, the grant funding, and hopefully there's some sort of equitable distribution of, you know, staff time as it pertains to accessing grants. Hopefully, that's something that this team is keeping into account as folks are trying to create a path forward for some of these plans and, and projects that we have. So just wanted to sort of elevate that as maybe a growth opportunity for a more uniform, more uniform presentation across this process, and hopefully each department can have or receive similar support for grant funding. I already spoke about KPIs, but, you know, also would like to see a little bit more of that uniform across departments in terms of how we're measuring success, and I think that leadership comes from this team in terms of determining that and what that looks like, so just wanted to elevate that as well, not just for homelessness, but just in general as we continue our work as a city. I know that we all share the goal of providing quality services and experiences for our neighbors. And I think that's, those were my general comments, the priorities here. I, again, just want to thank you all for all of your work in keeping, managing our city. So thank you, and look forward to continued partnership as we move forward, and thank you for your work.
Let's press on to the City Quick.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I am City Clerk Jeremy Bochino. I'm here to present the City Clerk's Office Work Plan Priorities for Fiscal Year 2425. And since you asked, our mission is to excel at compliance, transparency, and customer service, which I think we do a pretty good job of. So before I talk about our priorities, I just wanted to list, which you see up there, some of our core functions, which pretty much take the bulk of our time, and they are to administer the municipal elections, maintain the legislative history of the city, act as a compliance officer for state and local statutes, ensure accurate and accessible public records, and we administer the city's record management program. And it is also my pleasure to work with you all in conducting the City Council meetings, including managing the agendas and the related materials and minutes preparation, and arranging for ceremonial and official functions. My office also provides insight, recruit, sorry, oversight, recruitment, and administrative direction to currently 13 commissions, boards, and committees. While we have responsibilities required by law that we fulfill, we are also reactionary to the needs of the city's public, staff, and officials, including to responding to public informational inquiries and working with the council members, CBC members, staff, and the public, which we do on a daily basis, as well as doing outreach regarding our programming and upkeep of our webpages. I want to acknowledge the work of our division staff, Deputy City Clerk Tiana Allen, and City Clerk Specialist Mimi Farrell, who do provide excellent customer service as the first point of contact for inquiries and processes. We've been down one staff person for six months, but we're excited that we just closed the application period, so we hope to be back to our full staff of four before the end of this fiscal year. For our work plan priorities, in 2425, we will continue our core functions while we prepare and officiate the November 5, 2024, general municipal election, which we're estimating the cost to be $200,000 if you take into account marketing and other informational flyers that we need to do, as well as the LA County cost to run it. Regarding records management, and along with planning, HR, and other departments' plans to digitize the records, we will be implementing a citywide electronic document management system called GIML, which will match our paper records retention schedule that we update biannually. And this program will identify and implement life cycles for our official records through the GIML project, and we just added it last month. So we'll be training staff, and with the assistance of IT, we will have it fully operational and fully implemented by, we hope, the end of this year. Also with IT, we will be doing the equipment analysis for the AV components to enhance or fix the experience for our meetings that we have here in council chambers. And we are also working with the City Attorney's Office and City Managers' Office to hopefully finalize the, the large lift of completing the City Council Policies Comprehensive Update and to continue updating meeting procedures, guidelines, and this municipal code rules of order, decorum, and public participation. Finally, we'll be working on continuing to engage our city's youth to encourage participation in their local government, which we try and do every single year. This concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Any comments for, for yourself?
No.
Wonderful. Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you very much, Jeremy, for always making sure we're prepared and look good. What is GIML? What is?
GIML is, it's part of a system that they basically come in using SharePoint, which is what we use for all of our documents, and it allows us to put life cycles onto our official records. So while my office has a lot of records that have to be kept forever, there are a lot of records that are, you know, like contracts when they expire, 10 years after that, they, we can get rid of them. So much like the city is wanting to get rid of their paper and digitize everything, we have the retention system that allows for that for the paper, and the GIML will allow us to do the same thing for the digitized versions of those. So moving forward, once we have everything digitized, we will be able to enact the retention system that way.
Very cool.
Yeah.
All right, well, no, no question, Jeremy. Thank you and your staff for really, like I said, always making sure we're, we're upright and standing. Appreciate you guys. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. I think this is great, and we are looking forward to the upgrade of the chamber's AV system, so good luck.
Thank you.
And I think that's one thing here that you have on your list that I think is important, and that is your participation with the City Attorney in the meeting procedures and rules and so on, so, and try to get that in place ASAP. That was it. So thank you. You guys are doing a good job and keeping us informed and so on, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. We're small but mighty.
Councilmember Pooza.
Thank you for the presentation and for all the work that you and your team do. I don't know if this is a question for you, or maybe it's ITS, but is there a way to, on the website, just to navigate the website to get to, like, public comment and to the meeting agenda easier? I just, a lot of people have trouble navigating that, especially just public comment. I know on the website, like, you can get to city meetings, but then, once you get there, a lot of people get stuck.
Right, and unfortunately, the, where you can join the meeting or view the agenda is, is a separate outside version of our Granicus program, which is separate from where we are able to provide access to make comments or request to speak. So again, it's, they're, they're two different programs that don't work with each other that we try to bridge, but we can definitely work to see if we can make it easier to find. And we've been trying on our emails and gov delivery to at least get you to the place where you can view it, and also get you to the place where you can make a comment or do written comments. The e-comment section is on the Legistar Granicus webpage, so that's good, but the request to speak is, yeah.
No, and I noticed there's a lot of options, but oops, yeah, there's, so I appreciate that. I know there's been attempts, but yeah.
Yeah.
Still elusive to some.
In progress.
Thank you.
We'll continue to look at it.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Mayor O'Brien.
Thank you, Jeremy, and thanks to Tiana and Mimi and Alicia sitting in at the controls. Go pilot. Yeah, you're just always available and always really helpful, and you're so knowledgeable about, you know, what we can and can't do as council members, and I appreciate your availability and, and help in navigating all that. My only question, similar in vein to Councilmember Pooza, is are the video recordings, are they kept forever? they kept forever? Are they accessible?
They are, actually, on that same site. I'm just see if I can pull it up for you.
Okay, but not on, someone told me, and I haven't verified it.
It's not.
Okay. So both the, or neither the YouTube nor the city-linked videos are maintained for perpetuity?
I'll show you what is kept. If you see here, this is the Legistar page. So all of the videos that we have recordings for are kept right here. However, they're not kept on YouTube.
Okay, but they are kept there.
They are all here. You can watch any one of our meetings.
Sometimes, you know, the minutes don't reflect precisely what we say, and it's good to have that available.
Exactly. And for the general public, if anyone's listening.
Right.
In between our getting the minutes back, finished, and approved by you, which is the only time we put them up, the video is up within 48 to 72 hours after the meeting takes place. So you can always come to, it literally will get you there if you go to CulverCity.org/Agendas. You can just click and get this.
Maybe going, unless there's some cost involved, but I have, I have a YouTube channel. I don't think there's a limit on how much I put there. The, if we could, going forward, not, unless it's the plan that we have that bumps older videos off, I know that that's the more accessible portal for a lot of people.
I'll talk to IT about it. However, this is the official page, so this is why we make sure it's here.
Sure.
And, and I'm not sure what IT does regarding the Youtubes, but I know that this is where you'll find it.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. Really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for the presentation, all of your work, you and your team's work to support us in the facilitation of these meetings and many others, so deeply appreciate that. The only question that I have really doesn't reflect, I don't have any issue with the priorities and support, support those, and hope that they will go well and successfully throughout this fiscal year, this upcoming fiscal year. But it's more to, last year, y'all had the public records processing system there. I just wanted to check in and see how that was going, since it was reflected as ongoing. So I just wanted to see, you know, I understand that it is easier, I've heard from folks, you know, that there's transparency around, you can see what other people are requesting. So I just wanted to see from staff side how this update has been, since it's not reflected, I don't think, in the priority.
No, it's not. That's one of the, I call it plates, that we have spinning up in the air now. We have, just have to keep that spinning, keep it going. So I think last year, we had about 580 records. We are on target for having at least 750 record requests coming in that we're fulfilling. Could be up to 800 or nine this year, who knows? It is something that we work with the city attorney's office on frequently, because there are some requests that are very easy, if it's pulling of a permit to look at or something, to something that is very complex, that takes several departments and the city attorney's office to manage it, or the IT department to pull thousands or pour through thousands and thousands of emails to find information that someone is asking for, so.
Does the software cut down on any of the time?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Tremendous amount.
Yes, good. And would it be a record this year in terms of, you said it maybe not, I don't, I don't know what are normal.
I don't know what is normal anymore either.
Okay.
We're trying to streamline all of the departments to utilize the system so we can really get a better count.
Yeah.
On how many requests we have, because it used to be someone would walk up and ask for a specific permit, and they would pull it right there. But now we're trying to do it through an electronic process and, you know, make it happen.
Yeah, support that. Okay, well, wishing you luck on that spinning plate and everything else.
Thank you.
I don't see any other, and thank you again for all of you and your team's work. Councilmember Vera, did you have something else to add?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I just, no worries. All right, well, thank you so much for that presentation and responding to our questions and comments. So we have economic development.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Economic development works strategically to implement projects and programs to facilitate business attraction and retention, as well as the long-term reinvestment and economic vitality of our community. Our core functions include supporting new and existing businesses with permitting and other issues, encouraging visitation to retail, restaurant, and services, supervising and producing city and community events, progressing partnerships and development of former successor agency assets, liaising with business improvement districts, supervising parking city facilities, a weekly farmer's market, and convening industry clusters and tracking regional economic trends to ensure that our city is responsive and resilient. In economic development, we work to promote all of our city's assets to encourage businesses, residents, and visitors to choose Culver City. This includes working in partnership with our city departments to ensure that the attractiveness and safety of our commercial corridors, and also promoting our exceptional city services, locations, and amenities. As we look to the year ahead, we focused our priorities on the following areas. Next slide. We continue to collaborate with property owners, brokers, and businesses to understand current issues and assist where possible to facilitate support services, education, and business-to-business facilitation. We will continue to use software assets to give us current information on properties, leasing specifications, visitation, and comparative data to help us position our programs and focus accordingly. Next slide. We're working to produce high-quality events in Culver City and expand our Summer Sunset Series to eight concerts, explore the development of a Jazz Series and Artisan Craft Fair, winter ice rink, and acquire equipment and modular staging for events in Town Plaza. We are also progressing the city sponsorship program and collaborating with finance on simplifying the special event permit process. Next slide. A message we continue to hear is the need for us to focus on our tourism assets, both from our hospitality cluster and from our economic vitality task force. To that end, we'd like to launch a Visit Culver City initiative via an external website in conjunction with our business partners to build a brand, promote destinations, and experiential opportunities, and position Culver City nationally and internationally as we prepare for the arrival of the World Cup and the Olympics in 2028. Next slide. We are also working towards expanding our workforce development efforts to include collaborating with West Los Angeles College to create pathways and internships and encourage the growth and development of a talent base accessible to our local business community. Next slide. We are hoping to progress our collaboration with Public Works, Park Recreation, and Community Services, and Business Districts to refresh our commercial corridors with new plantings, trees, and lighting improvements where possible. Next slide. Another effort we would like to progress is a lighting program in Media Park to increase visibility, create an attractive environment, and connect downtown Culver City to this open space amenity. Next slide. As we continue to maintain our parking structures, we are focused on implementing improvements to enhance customer experience and extend the facility lifecycle. We are also looking to conduct an updated fee study to ensure we remain competitive and supportive to our local business community while also supporting the operation and maintenance of our structures. Next slide. And lastly, we continue to work with developers to progress disposition and development agreements for properties of the former successor agency located in the Transit District, downtown Culver City, and West Washington Boulevard. In short, we are very excited for the year ahead. Concludes my presentation, and I'm going to hand it over to Jesse. I'll take questions first, of course, sorry.
City Clerk, do we have any comments on this item? Okay. Councilmember Vera.
Couple of questions. One, I really enjoyed working with you and Councilmember Erickson on the subcommittee. I think, you know, it's really great with the property owner's broker meeting, although I wasn't able to attend it. I heard some, some of the folks who were there, and they really enjoyed the conversation and bringing things, you know, forward that they might not have had the chance to do so, other forums. And also, thanks for addressing some of the issues with the parking lot, and there was an issue with the power washing, and some folks were up in arms, but I really appreciate you guys getting on that right away and responding. You know, the branding, Visit Culver City was brought up in the subcommittee meeting, and I think it's really a great opportunity to, the brand, to put forward what we want folks to see about, you know, see and recognize for Culver City and highlight areas. I'm really looking forward and excited about that. In terms of our commercial corridor and our commercial properties in general, do we have a guesstimate in terms of like vacancy rate and what we're looking at?
So we have an updated vacancy rate. For our retail, we're looking at a 3.4 vacancy rate. For our office properties, we're in a 22% vacancy rate. Our combined average vacancy rate is about 16%, which is comparable with Santa Monica, West Hollywood, Beverly Hills.
Okay. Yeah, we can focus on somehow getting those up and filled. Elaine, thank you so much. I really enjoy working with you and looking forward to what the future holds for you and this great city of ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, we have our very productive economic development subcommittee meeting. So I, I don't really have any questions. I just want to make two points, and that is that there's two things that are in my mind priorities, and then a lot of this falls into them, right? And one of them is to attract and retain, retain quality business, because as we know, that's where we get our revenue, to be able to run our city. So that is number one. And number two is, I think with the Visit Culver City, it's really important to get the stakeholders to actually participate financially as well as with, you know, their brains and meetings and so on, because the whole idea is to, you know, attract and retain visitors and residents. So those two things, I think, they should be the goal for everything that happens now for the next year. So thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for keeping all those different meetings with stakeholders going. I think those are very valuable, so we should keep on doing them, which I know you will. Thank you.
Councilmember Puzza.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. This is going to be a very important department now and in the future as we think of ways to generate revenue. Personally, I love that summer concert series. I think I went to everyone, almost everyone. That's just a personal aside. Can you share more about, I know I emailed you about this, but can you share more about the capital improvement project on the Arts District in the West Washington median?
Sure. So we're looking at working with the Culver City Arts District, Business Improvement District to revitalize the lighting in that district. So they're coming forth with a proposal that we will be presenting to the city council in regards to a lighting improvement project that they want to do. And we're also exploring whether or not we want to wrap or remove the surrounds that are out there. So there seems to be some, some interest in removing them, and we've talked with Public Works about what that would look like in terms of capping off the electricity, removing them, and kind of clearing the space. And there's also been some discussion about trying to rewrap them. Both options are fairly expensive, but we do want to do this in collaboration with the Arts District, since it is their business district, and we have been in communication with them. For West Washington, a longtime goal that we've had, you know, as we progress our area improvement plan, Phase Three and Phase Four, Phase Four will be hopefully being bid in the near future. That includes seven medians along Beethoven and Glencoe in the center line of the, of the street. That trap, excuse me, that calms traffic and it creates more of an aesthetic and attractive environment. And one of the things that we've always wanted to do to kind of capstone that project is to plant more canopy trees. Along that portion of West Washington, it's mostly Washingtonian robusta trees. They're very tall at this point. They provide no shade, and it gets quite hot. So where there are opportunities to do so, I know Dimitri mentioned this last night as well, he's eager to plant trees. It's just a matter of if we can find the right locations. Obviously, as you've seen, closer to Inglewood Boulevard, when we have developers or new development going into a space, one of the requirements that we have for their streetscape is that they plant trees. But we're also looking at some of our stretches, and this obviously may change with the general plan and the interests that there will be for development along this corridor. But we will be looking for places where we may have some existing tree wells that do no longer have a tree where we can replant them.
Excellent. Thank you. Where would the Jazz Series be? And then the activations, will we have, a lot of stuff is focused in downtown, which makes a lot of sense, but will there be some activations in other parts of the city, if that makes sense?
So the Jazz Series, we have approached the Kirk Douglas Theater and Center Theater Group about possibly using that space if there isn't an active production going on there. We'd be also reaching, we also reached out to the Jazz Bakery to see if they were potentially interested in doing what they called their movable feast, which could be in different locations throughout the city. We haven't really heard back on that. So it would, most likely, we're looking, we're targeting a fall date. There's still some work to be done, but we'd be looking at an indoor location. So we don't have a specific for that. In regards to events throughout the city, that's an important initiative that we do and what we like to do with our Love Local. We are focused primarily, one of the, one of the issues that we have is that downtown is the easiest place to do events because we have the parking and the space. Last year, we did an event in West Washington. We're doing our Love Locals this year. We have three that are going to be coming forth to you, so we're doing one. And the Helms Bakery Walk on behalf of the Arts District, we're doing one at Westfield Culver City. That one's coming up on April 27th, and that will feature a band and some sustainability issues. I'm sorry, sustainability initiatives, along with their good festival that Westfield's promoting. And then we're doing our last one, it's a game one in downtown Culver City. So we do look in different locations. It's just a struggle to find, to find outdoor locations. So hopefully, the Westfield is meant to attract the Fox Hills residents.
Great. Just want to support the tourism, Visit Culver City. I know West Hollywood and Santa Monica do it. I know West Hollywood generates a lot of revenue from that. Last question, just thinking about job opportunities for those who are ready, folks who are in our unhoused, like the Project Home Key or Safe Sleep Site, connecting them to possible job opportunities, job training. Are there any of that, is there any conversations about that?
So we worked historically with JBS to help upscale and promote, and we've talked about this with Director Barnes, as well as when we have residents that are in our facilities, if they're interested in learning about new or different opportunities, they can do that through JBS. But we've also been having conversations with Dr. Limbaugh at West Los Angeles College. And as you know from our meeting yesterday, there are a number of students that are technically homeless that attend the school. So we would want to be opening all of those pathways. So to the extent that we know about that and they're interested in making connections, we would absolutely facilitate that.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Brian.
Mayor, thank you, Elaine, for your presentation. A lot of questions that we can't talk about because it has to do with the property, you know, potential developments, but I'll follow up on that level. Pretty excited about the low vacancy rate for retail. I spoke with the manager of the Westfield Mall recently, and I think they're at like 100% of, they're fully rented. The, you know, in the economic development and attraction of businesses, and we're talking about revenue, hotels, you know, big one, wherever we can make that happen. I know we had one potentially down on Jefferson, and I don't know what state or status that's in, but anywhere we can find that opportunity, I think that that's an obvious way to raise revenue. And then bringing up the Arts District again, I was having conversations with their, the bid director, Jamison, and their bid president, Noah Balin, and activating, you know, they've lost most, if not all, of their galleries. So, you know, the Arts District title is a little undeserving right now, but I think we can make it such with Poohic art and finding ways to do that. A simple way that we, we talked about is there's, I think, four or five derelict bus shelters, where there used to be, I think, bus maps in three-by-five frames, metal frames, just putting art in, with. Just putting art in, within those would be a pretty quick and easy activation, and I, I think, pretty affordable. So, I, if we can engage in that conversation, you know, also with cultural affairs, that would be great. And then, I've had conversations with the, the government affairs people at our three studios about having a, an intentional effort to hire locally. And they all expressed interest. So, I would really like to, you know, activate that effort. They all said that they'd be willing to work together, have a, you know, a joint jobs fair situation. So many things that that can solve. We've got so many talented people in Culver City who commute all over, you know, to downtown LA, to, you know, the valley. And studios are basically cities. They, they don't just have directors and editors and, you know, filmmakers, but they have accountants and janitors and, you know, every job you can imagine. And if we could have folks, you know, e- even move the needle a little bit and, and get a few more people working there, that's fewer cars on the streets, you know, families able, you know, parents able to spend more time with their families, be able to engage more with our community as volunteers. So, I'd, I'd really like to try to make a focus in that direction going forward, and I'd be happy to help with that. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your presentation and your work. How many people are on your team?
We have five on our team.
Five on our team. And do you feel like that's good? I know there's a lot that has restarted and came back online, and there's even more, you know, as soon as new ideas are all over the place. So, just wanted to check in and sort of see how, how it's feeling, given everything that we have going and growing in our city.
We are busy, but we are very passionate about the work. I love my team, so shout out to Edgar, Luis, and Liz, and Michelle.
Wonderful. Plus one. All right. Glad to hear that. Well, let us know if that should ever shift. We want to make sure that you all are successful. In terms of, I, I see, of course, for obvious reasons, there's a big sort of business focus and the priorities, which, you know, I definitely support. Healthy business economy is a healthy city. I'm wondering if there's any opportunities to sort of engage our community-based organizations or nonprofits. I know some of them are engaged in some of the chambers and associations as well. I don't know if it's everyone, but I just wanted to sort of flag that as an opportunity and a partnership and a community base that I think, you know, could potentially take advantage of some of these engagements and priorities that you set forth. So, I know we don't have like a, a ton, but I know that there are some folks here who care deeply about many issues. So, just wanted to flag that as a potential opportunity to, to bring folks in and, and engage those folks. And I, and speaking of the Visit Culver City title, I know that the Chamber was trying to push like a Discover Culver City. I kind of like that one a little, not, no offense to Visit, because Visit feels more short-term to me. And to me, I feel I'd like, and again, I'm not a branding expert, so, you know, the case studies have been done, then hey. But I think there's something a little bit magical about Discover, and it's like, you know, see how you can play here, see how you can learn here, you know? So, it kind of opens the door to more things, where Visit is like, welcome and leave, and take your stuff with you. And I know that's not the intention, but that word is just a little like, well, you know? So, I kind of like Discover, and maybe it's another word, right? Like, I don't know, but I just wanted to just offer that, because that's what immediately came up for me when I heard Visit, because I hope that we would be more open to welcoming all sorts of partnerships and neighbors and groups and whoever, whoever is interested in exploring what we have to offer here. So, that's my main feedback to that. But just in, in general, the idea and the thrust of having assets and a campaign around, you know, welcoming folks into our community and to enjoy what we have to offer, I think is incredibly essential, given everything that is coming online and is coming to our region, and I want to make sure that Culver City is in, in the arena for all of those. So, just wanted to offer that feedback. Also, you know, I'm happy to hear of the, the Love Locals that are coming up across the city, and glad to see some of our other neighborhoods are getting some support, although of course we love our downtown area. Just wanted to flag that Westfield has been doing, I don't know if they have new folks over there, but they've been doing some really interesting sort of engagements and activations at that space, really turning it into like a, a community kind of, you know? And you know, there is always a Santa, there's always like a Easter bunny, like, but outside of that, like, I think they're doing things for Women's History Month. They had a whole monthly activation for Black History Month. They're doing something, while I was there, they were talking to me about Hispanic Heritage Month, that they're already thinking about how they're going to engage and partner and bring, bring folks in. So, I don't know, whatever they're doing, their people are there. So, and malls, in a time where malls are kind of drying out, so, I don't know, just wanted to, you know, I'm sure their relationships are there, but if there are ways that we can participate, support, just wanted to flag that. And the last piece, and again, I, I don't have any issues and excited about the workforce development, everything is, I think this is, we're moving for certain in the right direction. One of the things, I think I spoke with the city clerk about this, but just speaking directly to you, when our new businesses come in town, I would love if there was like a formal way that we could like acknowledge them, like, hey, these are the new businesses that are coming, y'all go and check them out, because I feel, whether we're at Ribbon Cuddings or whether it's a certificate, but I really think it's important for us as a city to say, hey, when you're here, you're, you know, we appreciate our businesses, and even our nonprofits. Like, maybe there's a new nonprofit, or I know those don't come online as frequently, but whatever the case may be, that we're acknowledging our community partners that are, that are investing in our community in, in different ways that we appreciate. So, just wanted to acknowledge that as something that might be a low-effort opportunity that might mean a lot for folks who are choosing to, you know, expand and be a part of our community. So, those are my, those are my comments. Not seeing any more, so, so thank you again for your work, you and your teams. We're keep, keep it up. We're excited for the summer and, and everything that is on the way for your team. So, last but not least, we have Cultural Affairs.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. This is the first and hopefully the last time I present the Cultural Affairs Work Plan to you.
Tell us how you really feel.
No, I love Cultural Affairs, but I would love it to have a Cultural Affairs manager who will start on Monday, Sally Unsworth, and she's fantastic. She's coming to us from New Jersey, all the way from across the country.
My name? She's actually, she's from the same, she's from Maplewood, and I grew up in South Orange. They share a school district, so the world is incredibly small. When I saw that, I was like, oh, so, so cool.
That is hilarious, and I understand there's quite a few Cultural Affairs Commissioners from New Jersey as well, so.
It's a good place. You know, I'm biased, I'm here now, but you know, it's.
Apparently.
Good place.
So, Cultural Affairs has the distinct honor of being the only city in the department with staff whose names are a paludrum. We have Lee Lawler and Sam Lee are our two fantastic staff members, and I'd like to give a shout out to them, because they've really been doing a good job carrying on the tradition that Christine Byers started before she retired at the end of last year. Color functions of the Cultural Affairs Division include supporting the Cultural Affairs Commission, the CAC, implementing the Art in Public Places program, working on historic preservation, implementing and promoting the Performing Arts Grant Program, implementing the Artist Laureate Program. We're currently on our second artist laureate in our city's history, and we will begin recruiting later this year for our third. Improving and expanding public outreach is a constant goal of ours, and we will continue to work with the nonprofit Culver Arts Foundation on programs and projects and to raise additional funds and promote awareness of the city's cultural programming. We also work very closely with Elaine Warner and the Economic Development Team, and the staffs are actually moving next week to be closer to each other on the third floor, so we'll increase collaboration even more, more with that move. For the upcoming year, we've worked on presenting a variety of key programs and projects using input that we got from the Cultural Affairs Commission as well as the Culver Arts Foundation. One of those is a concert series in the chambers. It's some, a program that used to take place here several years ago, and the Cultural Affairs Commission is really eager to get that back up and running, bringing in top, top-notch artists to perform here for the, for the community. Next slide. We're working on a storefront art program. We're already underway with that, working closely with economic development to make use of empty storefronts, which, as you heard from Elaine, you know, aren't, aren't as many as there once were due to our vacancy rates, but we would like to beautify them using local artists. Next slide. The Cultural Affairs Commission would really like us to emphasize the, the creative economy and host networking events for local creatives to get together, mix and mingle, and come up with great ideas. And so, we'll be working during the next year to do sort of a pilot for that with, between one to two events, working closely with economic development. We've been working very closely with the Olympic Subcommittee of the City Council on planning for the Olympics, and a lot of that will have to do with the arts. The arts are always celebrated during the Olympics and will be no different. We're looking forward to a meeting later this spring of a supercommittee of subcommittees from all our various areas, Parks and Rec, Cultural Affairs, the City Council, Historic Society, Sister City Committee, to talk about how to celebrate the arts during the Olympics. We'd like to deacquest the city of the Dino's Motel sign. We have some thoughts on how we might do that, but that's a priority just to finally, I believe it's one of the last steps that we need to do to finally complete Project Home Key, is get rid of that sign. So, we're hoping to find a good home for it, and we're asking for some funding, but ideally, whoever takes the sign would also pay to remove it. That, that would be our number one goal. We'd like to work on an updated cultural community plan. It's been several years since that was updated, and once the general plan update is completed, we will have a good roadmap for that. You also see here the Mark Furness sculpture that the city council approved in concept two years ago. We're still working on that with Hackman Capital Partners. It's a Art in Public Places piece of artwork that they're donating to the city, and we're currently working with them on seeing how we can install the artwork but also not impact our summer concert series. So, Cultural Affairs and Economic Development staff are working very closely on that project as well. The Cultural Affairs Commission has been working on program revisions to the Art in Public Places ordinance. They are going to come forward in the next couple of months with suggestions to the city council on how they'd like the program to be updated. And of key concern to the commission is the amount we are spending on performing arts as opposed to hard art or visual arts. There's debate at the commission about how much we should be spending and, you know, where we should be allocating performing versus hard art. And currently, in the current ordinance, we're capped at 25% of our revenues to the art fund on the performing arts, and it seems as though there may be a suggestion to, to increase that, but we will, we will see. If, if that's the case, we may need to do a nexus study, which is where we're requesting some funding for that. And finally, another key project for this year is the Police Station Fountain. It's actually called Sentry, and it's a 25-year-old piece of artwork. The fountain itself has been in disrepair for many years, and we've been spending money keeping it running, and it's been repaired several times. And the tiles are in disarray, so we would like to get started on our project, working collaboratively with the Police Department and the community to, and the commission, to figure out how to potentially replace that project. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any public comments to be quick?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Vian.
I don't have any questions for you, no. Um, yeah, it's the first and last time, I'm sure you're, you're happy about that, and I'm really looking forward to interacting with the new manager and really working with her. I mean, a lot of great ideas. I, I loved the, the Concert in Chambers series that we had way back when, I remember, you know, bringing the piano in here and having some really award-winning musicians that, it was really, really fun time, and it would pack these chambers. So, I'm really excited and looking forward to bringing that back. I think it'd be a, it's always a great community gathering. I, I love stuff like that. And then, as well as the, the storefront art, you know, some, some, something simple like that can really activate those spaces down there and really better the, the walkability environment, and people walk by rather than seeing just an open storefront. At least there's some sort of art and things to look at. So, anyway, I'm looking forward to, um, working with the new manager, and I think the, the motel sign didn't, one of our residents wanted to buy it and remove it, maybe we can reach out to him. Other than that, sir, thank you, and that's it from me. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Exon.
Thank you. Thank you, Yasi. I have, first, I have a question regarding the artwork outside the Police Department. I asked, asked PD earlier today when, when I went through this, why and so on, and response I got back was they had no clue that this was going to happen. So, I just recommend that maybe bring them into the picture at some point. I have no opinion about the artwork or removal or why it's there and, and so on, but yes, I was asking them, and maybe I should ask you why it was going to be removed, but you explained it.
We wanted to get your buy-in before getting their input, and it, it was discussed actually a long time ago with a police officer who's since retired.
Okay. Yeah. So, then, I just want to highlight or lift up the Creative Economy Network events. I think that is really important, and, and at the last meeting that Economic Development pulled together with the brokers and developers, there was one thing that came up. They felt that it was time to start creating sort of a, a regular networking event, and they suggested Thursdays, not necessarily every Thursday, but to start build a community of all the people working in the creative economy down on, on, in the art district and Hayden Track and up to here, right? So, I think it's a great idea, and, and I think the sooner the better, and, and coordinate with, with Elaine, because that similar request has then come from, from other stakeholders. So, there might be a way to get help with financing, so we don't have to shell out everything or maybe nothing. So, with that said, I appreciate your last presentation on this topic, and we're looking forward to the new manager. Thank you.
Councilmember Puzza.
Thank you for the presentation. Anticipating the new director, I know there's been concerns about staffing. Are we waiting for them to get in? Like, how do you feel about staffing? Are we just waiting for them to get into the new position and settled to see about that, or is that just a looming thing that will always kind of be?
I hope it won't always be looming. Yeah, I mean, staff has been busy, I mean, especially with the Katie Krantz mural and some of the special projects. There's, you know, there's work to be done, and I think we've made good headway with the staff we have, and we'll, we'll see what it looks like when, when Sally takes the office, and we'll have, you know, three full-time staffers again.
Great. Got it. Will there be, I know there's been interest in the Dino's Great. Got it. Will there be, I know there's been interest in the Dino's Motel sign. Will there be like a call to the public or?
I think our first call is going to be to the Museum of Neon Art in Glendale. That would, we need to reach out to them and see if they're interested. It's so large, I don't, I don't think that most, like the Historic Society, I don't, I don't think they are interested, but I think ideally a professional museum, and then if not, yeah, we'll go to Plan B, which, yeah, could involve just sort of opening it up, putting it up to auction.
Great. Great. And I know you mentioned about, I'm so intrigued by the community cultural plan. Are there any more details about it?
No, other than what's in the draft GDP, I just, it'll be a, you know, fairly involved process that involves input from the commission and the public, ultimately the council.
Excellent. So exciting. Great. Thank you for your report. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Jesse. Two questions. The creative economy analysis that we did, I think it was back in 2019, how frequently should that be updated? Is there a benchmark for that or?
I don't, I don't know that there's a benchmark. I think when we did it, however long it's been now, five years ago, it hadn't been done for a long time. I think it really just depends on what the commission and what the council are interested in seeing.
Okay. Yeah, I'm kind of curious about that and how we use, you know, talking with Elaine just before about, you know, employing our residents locally and having that information, I think, is valuable and whether, especially after the pandemic, what it looks like. And I think 2019, we didn't have Amazon and Apple. So be interesting to know more about that. And then having a conversation with a couple of people from Culver Arts today, a question came up regarding the Cultural Trust Fund and how that money can be allocated, and I'm looking at the breakdown on the website. One of the things is to incorporate a cultural facility into the development project, and there's a question as to whether or not we can, we can aggregate funds into one project. So from other developments to pay, to help pay for a facility. I know, like, former artist laureate, Alexi Steele, has spoken out about having a public gallery space. You know, there's a number of possibilities for facilities that, you know, we could potentially have. So if we can explore that possibility, see if that's feasible, I know it's a need.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, Cultural Trust Fund money can be used for a public art facility. So if they paid the in-lu fee, we could then take that money and use it to contribute to a capital project. The question would be just, you know, how expensive it is and what our country, you know, how much we'd be able to cover with our, our fund.
Right, right. Yeah, it'd be interesting to explore, you know, with, with any new development, you know, could this be something that we could, you know, value add and incentivize that developer to provide that space? It'd be great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this presentation. Because you're not really in this role, all I'm just going to say about the priorities are that, you know, I really appreciate and support the investment in arts. I feel like the city has a really important role to play in the facilitation and the fostering of this community and this effort. Where as much possible, I would love to see an effort to incorporate youth voice into, whether it's the community college or whether it's partnership with our school district here or some of the other schools here, just, you know, finding a way to incorporate young people into what we're doing would be wonderful. But I look forward to the master plan. Love that we are in a spirit of planning right now as a city and being intentional and trying to hear from our neighbors. Looking forward to the new manager coming in. So I don't have any real questions. My two feedbacks are just, let's keep investing in the arts, support young people, continue planning intentionally. And thank you for presenting this portion of the budget work plan. I just want to take a pause here on any additional comments or anything from the public that had not been brought up, whether it's on this item or any other items not on the agenda? Nothing? Okay. Are there any items from colleagues that folks would like to lift up at this time? Councilmember Axon.
Yeah, I think it's, after listening to all this, I think that it's time for us to put on the agenda to appoint a new Culver City historian, which is completely voluntary and so on, but I think we should, you know, Sarah had that position for many years, and we know she passed, so I would suggest that we put that on the agenda as soon as possible and get that going, if I can get nodding heads for that.
I see nodding heads from, I think, everyone. Thank you.
Only thing that I'd like to add to that conversation is just a concern about who it's accessible to, if it's just volunteer. So just hopefully staff can consider that in the staff report when it comes back, if it's only volunteer, just to lift that up. Any other items from colleagues? All right. Do we have any adjournment requests in memory? I don't think so. I don't think I got any emails about anything. I don't know if we need a motion to adjourn.
We've been motioned by Councilmember Vera, second by Councilmember O'Brien to adjourn. Please vote. All members have voted. The time is 7:39. Vote is unanimous, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Enjoy your weekend, everyone.
Enjoy your weekend.